Good evening and welcome to the Selectmen's meeting for Thursday, October 2, 2014. Tonight, the agenda will include approval of minutes for two previous meetings, questions from the public regarding items not on the agenda, a discussion of the Intermodal Transportation Center, the expedited permitting procedures, 43D, accessory units working group by Gary from the Planning Board, a joint session with the Personnel Board, Selectmen's goals and objectives. Ted's going to go over the first view of the five-year forecast. We'll do some appointments, Selectmen and Town Administrator reports, then we'll go into executive session for a personnel matter and a real estate matter. So with that, we'll start with the approval of the minutes. Have you all had a chance to read both minutes?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as amended for September 16, 2014, and August 19, 2014.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, questions from the public? Do we have any? All right. And now the Intermodal Transportation Center. Right now, we have an embarrassment of riches in that we're very excited that the Intermodal Transportation Center, thanks to the good works of Bob Hedlund and Garrett Bradley, will be named for Seaman Herbert Foss. The discussion tonight is going to be around who works with the state on coming up with the plaque and the wording. We have a Foss Committee who has a very broad charge and a very large charge, which I have to thank Tom Piles because at first I thought with glee, well, their work is done. But in reading the warrant article, they have quite a bit of work ahead of them. The Medal of Honor Park, as well as the criteria to be developed for Medal of Honor recipients, how do we decide who goes into the park? And then into the park, the first thing is the Herbert L. Foss. So now we have a separate area, the Intermodal Center, and we have two groups that are very interested in being the group that works with the state. And I thought I'd open it up to my colleagues, the Foss Committee. Peter Finney is here, I see, and I know the Veterans Council has also expressed a very sincere interest in being the group that works with the state in doing this. So I'll toss it open to both of you as to what you think. Mr. Healy?
I'm forming my thoughts.
Mr. Gannon?
So I, actually, nobody has contacted me at all about this issue, so I would like to hear from some people here, see what their perspective is.
Okay. I think that's fair. Peter, I know you wanted to say some things. Would you like to start it off?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Peter Finney, nine Aberdeen Road.
Come on up here to the microphone, so people at home can hear you.
Peter, if you'd like to sit here, you could, or you can stand at the microphone. Good evening, everyone. My name is Peter Finney. I'm the Chair of the Foss Memorial Committee here in Hingham. Been part of this committee for roughly two years. The committee has been through some change over that two-year period, the spring, when some of the members resigned and the committee was reconstituted with other members, and the charter and I think the direction of the committee was changed. It went to Annual Town Meeting on April 28, and it was under a different article at that point where we added in two other, let's just call them subarticles. The main one, obviously, was to do, as Irma has just described, which was to name a significant facility somewhere in the town after Herbert L. Foss. But there was a lot of discussion within the town, you may remember this, in the spring, about including other Medal of Honor winners in Hingham. There was some discussion and debate about whether there were, in fact, other people who were part of what I would just call other Medal of Honor winners. And the bottom line was, it was decided that in the Article 19 at Town Meeting and unanimously voted in, that the Foss Memorial Committee would try to do three things. One, it would try to identify a significant monument at the harbor front for Herbert L. Foss. It would also try to recognize a memorial Medal of Honor Park, and then recognize any other Medal of Honor winners as well. Clearly, what has happened since then, and I should add that the new committee reconstituted with two of the folks that are here tonight, Alan Peralta and Alyssa Tully of the Six, and John McHugh, thank you, John, began to meet, we met in May, June, and July, and then this news came, this good news, I should add, for, I think, our town, that Senator Hedlund and Representative Garrett Bradley, as Irma has pointed out, were able to secure in the Governor's Bill this new intermodal facility at the Hingham Shipyard. I think, at that time, as the Chair, I sort of took it upon myself to talk directly with Irma, and I also spoke with Paul Healy as well on several occasions about what we needed to do next. And it was agreed upon, it was agreed with the Board of Selectmen, just individually talking to them, that we should give it a little time to see what shakes out. I think we were all trying to figure out what was happening. And then we've arrived at where we are tonight, which is that the State Department of Transportation has broken ground on this new facility. It's exciting. I think that in the town, I think, I haven't talked to anyone who doesn't feel great about this. I think the feeling now is, how do we move forward as a town in making sure that the town links up with the state to appropriately honor Seaman Foss? The question that I think is before us tonight, if I understand, and the reason that I'm here, frankly, is really two things. How do we move forward in talking with the state and working together to appropriately honor Seaman Foss? But secondly, what does this change do to the charter of the Foss Committee? And I think there are probably some folks that would like to comment on that as well. I think that this was a significant enough change that it, I know as a resident of the town of Hingham, I am questioning, you know, what the purpose of this Foss Memorial Committee is at this point. I understand that there are other things that the town voted in at the Annual Town Meeting about what to do with this medal, particularly the Medal of Honor Park piece and other potential recipients of the Medal of Honor. And so I don't think we can ignore that. At the same time, it was a significant enough change, and I view this really almost mostly as a process issue for the town to deal with in terms of how Annual Town Meeting works and, you know, what the obligations are that the elected officials have, and certainly, I know, I feel like I have as Committee Chair, to make sure that we fulfill what we said we were going to do when this was voted in on April 28. So apologize for that long-winded answer, but I thank you for the chance to speak. If I could, Irma, just say one other thing, and that is that, you know, I'm a 28-year veteran of the Navy myself. I got into this thing for one reason, and that was to do the right thing for the memory of Seaman Foss. And I can tell you that everyone that I've met through this process is also, I believe, trying to do that same thing. And I think this is a ripe opportunity for our town to follow through and make that happen. I think, at the end of the day, we should be celebrating this moment, and I hope, and I believe, that as a town, we're going to do the right thing and figure this out. But I do think that this is something that needs to still be resolved, and I look forward to further comments and discussion about where we're heading next, so.
Well, I think you've stated it pretty well. Let me read just a couple pieces from the Town Meeting vote. I'll read the recommended motion first, and then I think it's important, there are two key points in here, which is what brings us here tonight. The Town Meeting warrant article, in my mind, really addressed the harbor. And here is the recommended motion that the town raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of $40,000 for use by the Foss Memorial Committee for the design permitting and initial construction of, one, a Medal of Honor Memorial Park as designated by the Board of Selectmen, a memorial to Seaman Herbert L. Foss, USN, and/or memorials to other Medal of Honor recipients. Such designs to be subject to a final review and approval by the Board of Selectmen. And the very first, in the comments, "On March 1, 2012, the Board of Selectmen appointed the Herbert L. Foss Memorial Committee to develop a plan to commemorate Mr. Foss at the Hingham Harbor." Then it goes on for a while. "In consideration of the foregoing, the Board of Selectmen has recommended that a waterfront parcel of land at the harbor between Whitney Wharf and Barnes Wharf be designated as the Medal of Honor Memorial Park in recognition of all Medal of Honor recipients with ties to Hingham, and that a distinct memorial to Herbert L. Foss be constructed there." So, in essence, I read this as the Herbert L. Foss Committee is geared towards the harbor. Now, I think we have an opportunity here to make this very inclusive, because there is nothing but good news here. So I'm looking for other comments. Mr. Claypool.
Would you like me to come to the microphone?
You may, sure.
Ted, how are you?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and members of the Board of Selectmen and other administrators. I'm the Chair of the Veterans Council. And just as a matter of history, for eight years, the Veterans Council has been engaged in direct planning to attempt to do something to recognize Seaman Foss for the efforts that he put forth in receiving the Congressional Medal of Honor. And I must say that for eight years, we have been unsuccessful in our efforts in securing some sort of memorial for Seaman Foss. A predecessor of Keith German, Veterans Agent, made the comment one time, Mike Cunningham, that the town of Hingham has not seen fit to name a blade of grass after its Congressional Medal of Honor winner. So the Veterans Council has been, for eight years, working with a number of different people, including this board and predecessor boards, to secure a suitable memorial for Seaman Foss. And as everybody in this room knows, that's been an unsuccessful effort until Senator Hedlund came forth with his idea to name the intermodal building after Seaman Foss. The council had been working with Senator Hedlund as early as last fall to bring this project to fruition. However, at that juncture, we determined that we would be better suited, and a memorial would be better suited for Seaman Foss in the Hingham Harbor area. However, that effort seemed to fail. So once the intermodal building was named after Foss by the state, then the Senator asked if we would be interested in coming up with a suitable memorial for Seaman Foss. And I think a lot of this information, Madam Chairman, is memorialized in an article that was in the Hingham Journal last summer at some point. So we have been doing so. The Senator called me two days ago and said the state would like to have a preliminary plan of what we had in mind submitted to them, so that they could pass it by the various folks in the state. So we had a discussion tonight at the Veterans Council meeting, and a vote was unanimously made, Madam Chairman, to ask the Board of Selectmen to direct us to continue our eight-year effort to go forward with the, and work with the state and any other institution that is necessary, to put forth in that building an appropriate and suitable memorial for Seaman Foss. And I will pledge to you this evening that it will not cost this town one dime for that. The Veterans Council will undertake the financial responsibility to undertake and pay for whatever cost has to be incurred. And this is not the first time we've done this, as Alyssa Tully can attest to. We're prepared to go forward and make something happen with the town's concurrence, by the way. I told Hedlund we would need to be sure we had the Board of Selectmen's concurrence of whatever this design was. It would be of diminished proportion. It's not going to be a big memorial because of the space. But we ask you to direct us to go forward and bring this to fruition. We've been working on it for eight years, and we'd like to finish the job. And that's, I think, the substance of my comments. Thank you very much.
A question for you, general question. If we were to do that, how would you propose the Veterans Council would work with the existing Foss Committee?
Well, we would work with anybody that you asked us to work with. We've had nobody to work with for eight years, maybe for whatever reason. So we have always received our direction from the Board of Selectmen. We've been running with this ball for eight years. We have demonstrated performance, so we would just ask you to let us continue the march. But if you want us to work with other people, that would be fine. My only point would be that the more entities you bring into the picture, my experience is that the less gets done. It's inversely proportional. Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
I'm not sharing this meat.
Would you like to make, John?
John McHugh, 86.
Come up to the microphone, or join Mr. Claypool, one of the two.
John McHugh, 86, Central Street in Hingham. I think I'm the only one here who is both a member of the Foss Committee and of the Veterans Council. And I think the efforts are not mutually exclusive. I think the efforts of the Veterans Council to do something specifically for Foss and for his gallantry should be acknowledged, and they should continue to do it. On the other hand, serving with Peter and with the other members of the Veterans Council, I think they've got an eye not only to honor the veterans, but also to oversee much of what's going on in that area, which really needs grading and building up and making a beauty spot, a promenade perhaps, for the town. And so I think that the Foss Committee can do one and perhaps get the other started. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Do we have any other comments?
I'd like to expand on that.
Okay.
Why don't you call me sometime for us?
Thank you, Mr. McHugh. I appreciate those comments. You know, last year was a difficult one on this issue, and it was painful to go through it. Members, including Mr. Claypool, resigned from the Foss Committee, as it was then known. And Mr. Finney, Peter Finney, Alyssa Tully, John McHugh, Alan Peralta, Bill Riordan, D.J. McKinnon, carried on with the charge at Town Meeting. The Veterans Council, as I understand it, is a statutory creation. It's one of these committees that basically is created by statute, and it's in its purpose is to assist the Veteran Services Officer with respect to the benefits that veterans in this town get. This is slightly outside of that scope. Recognizing the efforts of Mr. Claypool, however, I don't want to make short shrift of that, but I do think that the Foss Committee that's in place now is the superior group to work on something that exists both at the harbor and down at the shipyard, so that what goes in complements each other. Captain Finney is a well-respected naval veteran. There are other veterans on this committee. There's a tremendous expertise here. Mr. Peralta makes his living building structures along the sea, along the ocean. I've worked with D.J. McKinnon personally on stuff in the shipyard and elsewhere. So he's got that development expertise, and I don't see why the Veterans Committee can't make recommendations to the Foss Group so that what the end result is, is something that we're all happy with. And that way, everybody gets to have a little something to say. Mr. Finney, I know in conversations with him as the Selectmen's liaison to the Foss Committee, previously held a job in state government, a high-ranking job, so I trust that his ability to liaise and put the right face, the right face on this effort to work cooperatively with a state agency is something that we just should not ignore, and we'd be foolish to do that. I really want to get this thing going without a lot of fuss, and frankly, we've already got a group of men and women that have spent a lot of time doing this in very difficult circumstances because it was, that was not a pleasant period. I don't want to go back to that. And I don't want to be competing for, you know, who's got the best honor or anything like that. I think if the Foss Committee is enabled to continue with its mission, it can craft whatever we do in the harbor to complement and fit in nicely with what goes in in the shipyard.
Thank you. So I have a question, and I don't know who may be the answer, but someone from the Council or the Foss Committee, maybe somebody. So the way I understand it is, Jim, is that you folks have been working with Senator Hedlund, and I assume Representative Bradley, to get this intermodal site named after Seaman Foss?
That is correct. It started last fall, although we were in favor of focusing on the harbor, but then, so it was essentially suspended until it was resurrected last July, and the council did work directly. I was in fact directly involved with Senator Hedlund and Representative Bradley, yes, sir.
And I know, Peter, maybe, in terms of the Memorial Park, Medal of Honor Park, I'm sorry, is that, where are we with that?
We've had three meetings since the Town Annual Town Meeting in April. We have been underway.
One second. They can't hear him at all.
Oh, Peter, can you come back up to a microphone, or come and sit with Jim Claypool?
Come on over here.
Why don't you do that?
Okay, so the article was passed on April 28. We met in May, June, and July. We immediately got going the new reconstituted Foss Committee, and we've had those three meetings. We were scheduled to meet on August 20. In conversations with Chairwoman.
With myself.
Yep.
Yep.
And Mr. Healy. We decided to cancel that meeting while this was held in abeyance, frankly, and we weren't sure. And I did not want to, in the middle of the summer, get six people in a room to talk about nothing, frankly, until we understood what the direction of the town was. So there really, where we are right now, Mr. Gannon, is that we are, we had established the criteria for how we were going to do this. We were looking at doing some sort of a contest, where we were going to try and bring in sculptors and other kind of people, not just from Hingham, but from as far-reaching as we could find, to really open this up and have it be a transparent process. I, too, have spoken with Senator Hedlund over the summer, and he was, you know, I shared that with him, that that's what we had been thinking about doing on the waterfront. And he was, he was open to any ideas that we had, frankly, about how to do this. So again, I mean, I think that, as we've discussed tonight, the focus really was on, I think all of us would agree, was on Seaman Foss. I think we, the committee, to some extent, I think we wrestled with, but I think we were getting close to figuring it out, how to inculcate in the piece about the Medal of Honor Park.
So people understand it, so there's going to be two different locations?
Well, good question. Originally, there was just the waterfront, and the parcel between, Alan, if you could help me out, Whitney Wharf and...
Barnes.
Barnes. Yep, thank you. That area was the area that we were really beginning to focus in on. And again, that was it. That was the only place this was going to happen. And then in July, I think it was July, we got this news. I think all of us were somewhat pleasantly surprised that this bill had passed and the Governor had signed for the intermodal facility. So now, what we're looking at is the potential to have some sort of a memorial to Seaman Foss in two different places, the shipyard and at the waterfront. And I think we need to, I think we need to have a further conversation about whether that's necessary, appropriate, or what have you. I think, as John McHugh has pointed out, there are, there is some work that needs to be done for the veterans on the waterfront. I'm not convinced personally that the Foss Memorial Committee is the right body to take that on at this point. But if the Board of Selectmen and others determine that, obviously, that you would like to continue with the charter from, you know, Article 19 from Town Meeting, and put some sort of a memorial to Seaman Foss at the waterfront, then the committee, you know, the committee should take that up. Our next meeting is on October 22. If anyone's not busy at 7:30 at night, would like to attend, we will talk about and come back to this board afterwards. And Madam Chair, you have invited me to come do that, which I will do, and we will come in November to talk about what we feel is the right recommendation. I'm not convinced, and I'm only speaking for myself, that it is appropriate for that committee to continue on unless, I think, as Mr. Healy has just pointed out, we were to have some sort of further role with what's happening at the shipyard.
May I comment?
Yeah.
I think we ought to take a look at Article 19, which I think focuses on a Hingham Harbor location for Medal of Honor winners, and Foss was a smaller portion of that. The Medal of Honor winner park was the principal focus of the design effort in that article, if you read it. Thank you.
Okay.
There's a question.
Alyssa, come on up. And then I'd like to make a suggestion. Peter, don't go anywhere.
Alyssa Tully, 29, Back River. And again, I think we need to emphasize the fact that we are very lucky that the state has come up with this, and we are finally able to recognize Seaman Foss, which is something the town has been working towards for a long time. I have, I'm going to introduce another thought here that makes it maybe not so easy to look at. Well, I just think that the, it's called the Foss Committee. I think the town voted for a memorial park, but also for a memorial to Seaman Foss. The landscape has changed. I think we go back to town and ask them what they want us to do. They voted in $40,000 to do X. That has all changed, and I don't think we should go forward without going back to town and asking them what they want to.
And that was a suggestion made to me today. Can I make another one? And then maybe, because our timeframe is shot. I think my planning is down the tubes. Could I ask that you two get together? Because I'd like to make this much more inclusive. Last year was a very bad year, and we have so much to celebrate. What I'd like you all to think about is, the Veterans Council has spent eight years trying to do something. I find it difficult to take it away from them when they're so close. Is there a way to have the Veterans Council do the legwork with the state and come back to the greater Foss Committee? Because we may end up having to go back to Town Meeting. This warrant article, to me, says it screams harbor. And Alyssa's right, we may. But maybe there's a better way to do this so that we don't have to go back to Town Meeting, and we can get it done. And I'd like you all to think about letting the Veterans Council do the legwork, come back to the Foss Committee, and then come back to us. And then everybody come back together as a single group.
Do I understand that you would like the Veterans Council to come up with some sort of design proposal, and go to the state, and have the state assent to whatever it was, and whatever changes they would require would be made? Then that solution would be brought back to the Foss Committee for its approval, and if they didn't approve it, then we have to go back to the state.
No, what I suggest, first, you guys work it out first. No, what I suggest, first, you guys work it out first. But then have the Veterans Council come up with their suggestion, because the state does have some pretty interesting guidelines. I started reading them, and then my eyes rolled back on my head, and I said, I don't need to know this. Have the Veterans Council come up with something, go to the Foss Committee, and get their input. I can't imagine that they're going to say no, or maybe want some tweaks. And then go to the state, or actually come to us and then go to the state. And maybe that will keep us out of town meeting, and maybe we can get it done before town meeting.
Well, I'm willing to do anything that you direct us to do, but I can tell you that whatever happens in that intermodal center is the state's business, and however we can persuade the state to let us do something with their property by putting something in the vestibule, seems to me to be a matter that the state would decide. And I don't know what the town meeting, in its wisdom, would, would have, since no funds are being asked for from the town, I don't know what the town would—
Well, I think to Lisa's point, this article basically says you're at the harbor.
Right.
The intermodal center is kind of down the road. So if we can get the intermodal center done without having to go back to town meeting, all the better, because it'll be done or well on its way. And I kind of, I'll ask my colleagues, but I'd sure like the two of you to try and work it out first.
Madam Chairman, could I—
Yes.
—suggest—
If you wander back up here, John.
Yes.
When I originally got up, I mentioned that I was the only veteran who was represented on both the Veterans Council and on the Foss Committee. Actually, there is, there are two others. There's Peter, and there's Bill also. But there is not a parity. And I would, and oftentimes, I was the lonely person pushing the veterans that, as opposed to beautification promenades, repairing the seawall, and things of that nature. And so I asked that there be a parity in terms of the membership, and that I asked that you add two or three more members of, from the veterans, to be on this committee. I think that's only fair. Thank you.
We'll consider that. What do you two think about—
I think Captain Finney ought to be the point person with the state. He's the chairman of the Foss Committee. He's got state experience. He presents well. He's good with people. I think he's the perfect guy for this. It's just a continuation of what the committee's already doing. You could certainly take input from Mr. Claypool and the Veterans Council, and incorporate it into the ideas that the Foss Committee is developing down at the old mobile site. And, you know, the state isn't subject to local zoning anyhow. They're going to do what they're going to do, whether it's putting a name on the building, or, you know, some kind of memorial outside, a statue, I don't know. But I don't know why that can't be easily done and done cooperatively with the Veterans Council.
I, I may have a fresh perspective, because I wasn't really on this board a year ago when all the problems occurred. And a couple of things I heard tonight, and that's why I was, thank you for everybody for speaking, is, is the warrant article spoke for a harbor location for Medal of Honor Park. And then, this is a separate, separate fortuitous event that gets us to someplace where we can celebrate Seaman Foss. And what I don't want to do is quibble about it, and I know that can happen, and it may happen, I hope it doesn't, but I, I think the Veterans Council should take the lead on it, but they should work closely with Foss. And if they work together, and they come up with something, and they want to make a proposal to us, fine. We're not, we're not trying to dictate to you guys. We're just saying, talk to each other, come up with a proposal, and come back to us.
Well, I would simply comment to say, Peter and I have worked together on a multiple number of issues in this town for a number of years. And I don't have a problem working with him, and I don't believe he has a problem working with me. We have, as you said, Paul, the Veterans Council and its members have been the ones directly associated and in contact with the state in making this whole thing happen. And I think I'd simply endorse what you said, and say, that's, that's the correct representation of what actually happened on the intermodal center.
Alan, come on up. We'll take one more comment, and then we've got to move on.
I know this has lingered longer than you wanted, and I was on the committee with Mr. Claypool and Mr. Finney, so I'm one of the successors to it. I'd like to second the comment that John McHugh made. This committee, there is a question about how workable and how big a committee gets, and how much less workable it is when it gets larger. We all understand that. But I believe, when town meeting voted the size of the committee, it was larger than what we have right now. And I believe there's two potential more seats you could have. So I almost second John's idea, that if you wanted, in my mind, to get the best of both worlds. I think you could still work through the town meeting organization. I think we're quibbling over this harbor location. When, and Jim will admit, when we were working at this, we looked at all kinds of locations around the town. So the fact that the town meeting zired on the harbor, I don't think should be the final line of saying, well, you're idle harvest, you shouldn't be talking about it. I think you have the right people on it. I think most of you know, I'm an action guy too. I was as frustrated as Jim was that we didn't get this thing done sooner. But I think the people that are there have the capability, let's get two more members from the Veterans Council. And then a majority of the Foss Committee will be veterans. I'm not, but I'm very sympathetic to it, and I think I can help get things done. And certainly in the Peter's direction, I think we can. Thank you.
Okay. And I'm going to side, I feel about the same way that Paul Gannon does. With eight years under their belt, I think the Veterans Council should take the lead on the intermodal center. What I'd like to do is, because my concern is, Lisa's concern, about going back to town meeting and wasting almost a year. I'd ask the two of you to come back next week—
Sure.
—and talk it out, and give us a proposal, whether it picks up on John and Alan's idea of adding two more people back onto the Foss Committee and doing it that way. Or letting the Veterans Council take the lead, come up with what they'd like to do, get the buy-in of Foss, and then go from there. So we don't have to go back to town meeting and try and expand the warrant article. Can we do that?
Well, I believe we can, but I find it, that it would just, I can't conceive of how we could ever have to go back to town meeting if no municipal funds are requested, and we're dealing with state property, as Paul says, they do what they please. So there's, the town has no dog in the hunt with respect to that property over there. The Council has already developed preliminary proposals on, on getting some ideas for, for a memorial for Foss in the intermodal center. I have no problems in sharing that with Peter. I, I would respectfully request that the Selectmen direct the Council to take the lead, and I'll, and Peter and I will work together. We've done it before, and I think he'll attest to that. So we need to get this thing rolling, though, and not introduce another level of delays, and that's going to cause us major problems. Because if we, as a town, can't come back to something satisfactory to the state with respect to Foss, they'll just go ahead and we'll be on the outside looking in again. And I just don't want that to happen.
Okay.
First of all, thank you all. Mr. Healy, thank you for your kind words. I really appreciate that tonight. I, I know how to salute and take an order, Madam Chairman, and I understand what's happening here. And as Mr. Claypool has pointed out, we have worked together on many things in the past, so that will not be an issue. I do like what Alan has said tonight about adding a couple more vets to the committee, and we will, we'll figure out a way to get it done. And at the end of the day, it will be a unified front from the town. So that is, I think, what we're all interested in.
Okay, so you'll come back to us next week?
We will.
Thank you.
What would you like us to come back with?
How are we going to get this done? With giving the Veterans Council a lead position in doing this?
We will do so.
Okay.
We'll make a stab at it.
No, we will do it.
Is it going to be done by next week?
Sounds like it.
Thank you. All right. Sorry for the delay. Thank you, thank you very much. The next, moving on to something that is quite exciting, actually. Expedited permitting procedures, 43D. And is it Sue Sullivan and Mary Savage Dunham coming up? And you're going to make us instant experts.
Can I get some more?
Yeah, sure.
Good. Nice sword.
Yeah, we can also update—
Do you got, oh, you got mints?
Yeah.
You have a mint yet?
Yeah, I do.
Sure.
I'm trying to get rid of the sword.
I bet he's going to see if we can get them to—
Okay. Ladies, take it away.
Thank you, thank you very much for having us here tonight. I would be remiss without also recognizing Buzz Constable, who is a property owner in the park, and he's also been doing a great amount of support work as we've been moving through this process. So he's also here as an official member of the team. We're here before you tonight to talk about expedited permitting procedures. Over the past three years, the town of Hingham has been working through the process of applying to the state of Massachusetts to designate the South Shore Park as a priority development site under Chapter 43D of Massachusetts General Law. This was approved at town meeting in 2012, and then confirmed in 2014. Each property owner signed the application that went to the Interagency Permitting Board. On August 13th, 2014, the Interagency Permitting Board unanimously approved the town of Hingham's priority development site at South Shore Park as proposed. The next step in this process is for the Selectmen to formally adopt the expedited permitting procedures, which I enclosed in your backup packet. And I think that you've discussed them in the past, informally. We're required to complete this step of permitting procedure adoption within 120 days from when the state formally accepted our grant package. They accepted it on September 23rd, so we have to have this formally adopted by January 21st, 2015, should the town continue to move forward with this project. Designation as an expedited, as a priority development site enables the municipality several advantages. You receive priority consideration for state grants. You receive priority consideration for quasi-public financing and training programs. You receive brownfields remediation assistance if you need it. You receive enhanced marketing of the parcel by the state, technical assistance from the Regional Planning Council, and a competitive advantage for economic development opportunities. And so, in a nutshell, that's the, that's the short story. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, is there any downside to this? If we buy into this and get all the benefits from the state? Usually, there's a little something they don't tell you about, that if you get this, there's something they expect, the expectations of what they think you're going to do in terms of, and I guess, Sue, I'll turn it back to you.
Yeah, I'll go, I'll go with this one, just because I've, I've got a lot of history of, of reading through the entire Chapter 43D statute. And I'll, there really is no downside. And, and the thing is, it's not really, at this point, we've already accepted it. We've already voted it in, the Selectmen already, the Selectmen approved it, we've already done that. And, and, but, but to clarify, there are no downsides. It doesn't say that we have to permit it. If, if a, if a development comes before us, it doesn't say we have to permit. It doesn't say we have to change anything we do, except that we have to do it in 180 days. And we've already proven on, on other occasions that we're able to do that. I mean, Hingham, fortunately, I mean, our, our governing process is such that we have, we have good structure in place, and we've been able to do, we've been able to have health and conservation run concurrently, and planning and zoning run concurrently. So what we're doing now is saying, okay, there has to be, through the statute now, there has to be a, one singular point of contact. And that, that's, that's the rule. And from that point, how it runs is what we've put before you tonight, is what the expectation is from, from the, from the Selectmen's office, within the rules of the, of the state, is how we're going to make that work. And what it is, is that the point of, our suggestion is that the Director of Community Planning be that point of contact. And that, that, what happens is, any, any permit request that comes in, any, any, you know, request, goes to that person. And then they, the town has 20 days through that person to certify it. Once it's certified, the process begins, and then we have 180 days. Now, there are all kinds of, people say, you know, well, what if we can't get it done in 180 days? Is there, are there any stoppage places? Can we, there are a number of, of fail safes in place that the 180 days could stop for. Those include, if there's an additional or originally unforeseen permit or pre-development review that's required, the timeline can be extended for a maximum of 30 days. Or if there's action by another federal, state, or municipal government agency that's required before the issuing authority can act, okay? Or if there's judicial proceedings, that results in maybe stoppage of the existing permit, or, or, or the timeline can be extended. So, and the third thing is also if the governing body and the applicant mutually request that the 180-day review period be waived or extended. So there are lots of times, and that might, and that could happen, that could happen halfway through the process, that the applicant makes a major change, and we say, wait a minute, that's, that's major. We can't do that in 180 days. And they agree to extend it or waive it. So, you know, you know, I, I agree, there's no, I always say, there's no such thing as a free lunch, you know? But I, I have not seen a downside to this process. And I, for the, we haven't come across an argument where people have, have, have said differently. Would you say, Buzz? Do you have any comment on that part of it?
Yeah, let's share.
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Go ahead.
I'm going to eventually drag Buzz up here. He's not, he's not getting away this easy. Especially after the great job he did the other night. Can I ask one more question, then I'll turn it up to you two?
Sure.
The 180 days, what happens to everybody else that's in the queue for permitting? Does this, with limited staff and limited number of hours, does this pop to the top and everybody then goes into a queue?
May I? 180 days, sounds like it's not very long, but the way that the department is functioning now, even with our staffing levels, we're meeting and exceeding that, even for larger projects. So my answer to that question would be that this project would be kind of on the side, and it would be moving along. And the single point of contact would be making sure that everything was happening in a coordinated fashion. But I will tell you that we already do that. So all the other projects would continue as usual. We have very active boards now, they meet weekly, so I don't expect that it would be a problem. And as Sue said, if there was a major change to the project, the timeline would be extended. And typically, when you're working in good faith with an applicant, and there's support for the project, if there is a major change, both parties are willing to consent to an extension. So I think it would be fine.
Madam Chair, can I just throw one other—
Sure.
Can I throw one other quick thing in there, too? There is an interesting, and it's an interesting thing that, that has been kind of on the side here, but in addition to the fees that we charge for, whatever we charge for health, conservation, you know, permitting and things and all like that, this, the statute allows for us to charge fees associated with expedited permitting as well. So if there was a need to bring in an additional assistance or somehow or other and all, and we, we set those fees, whether it's, whether it's a percentage of the, of the, of the size of the project, you know, of the, of the, of the cost of the project, you know, the value of the project, that's, that's something we will, we will be, be set doing later on. But towns, the towns have every right, and it's the expectation that there will be fees associated with the expedited permitting.
Gentlemen?
Mary and Sue, I'd like to thank you both very much for all the hard work. Especially, Sue, I know the kind of time you put in in getting this accomplished. I was part of the vote to move this forward, and I think that it's great to be on the board. I was part of the vote to move this forward, and I think that it's great to be on the back end to make sure that it becomes implemented. I think it's, the timing on it is excellent, and I look forward to getting going on it.
Just briefly, thank you, Mary and Sue. Sue, I don't know if you remember, but a few years ago, when I walked into that committee that you, you were chairing at the time, Dusty, and this is one of the issues that you, that I first started working on, and it's good to see that you guys have brought it home.
I think you're the one who actually read the whole thing from start to finish.
I don't know about that.
I think that was what you had taken on, on that.
Well, that was my job. Anyway, I'm happy that you guys and the committees do a great job. I appreciate everybody involved.
Thank you.
And I too want to thank both of you. I think this has great potential. I'd like to ask Buzz if he would come up and say a few words about what it means to him from a developer's standpoint.
I get to chair. Well, thank you, Madam Chairman. My name is Buzz Constable, and I'm the Executive Vice President of A.W. Perry, which is a significant, one of about 20 owners in the, in the 43D area. And so, I've, I've been told, I've been, haven't been in the political world long, but I've been around things for a long time, and when everything seems to be going the right way, you're supposed to just be quiet. So, but I would be, I'd be happy to tell, and, and I will join, I will join the Board of Selectmen in, in, in heaping praise on, on the planning department, and Mary, since she's been here, and Susan, and others that, in, in looking at this. I think historically, it actually goes back several years earlier. Hingham Street needs a lot of work.
Oh, my God.
We managed to, at the very beginning of this, the, the Board of Selectmen, a little bit of help by the, by the South Shore Chamber of Commerce, but the Board of Selectmen and A.W. Perry and others caught the interest of the executive office of housing and economic development, and that ultimately led to the grant which, which became the lights just south of, of Route 3 at Pond Park Road, which they funded. That work all had to do with economic development. I would argue that the, that there's not, there's never a free lunch, but I think in this case, the state, there's not a, the quid pro quo for the state here is, the state wants to promote economic development. By your putting in places, in, putting in place a, a regime which makes for a quick, a quicker yes or no, not giving up any of your substantive authority, but making it clear that we can all work together, that is what the state wants. So, that is what you're giving back to the state. Fortunately, it's something the town of Hingham's been doing for several years already, so a number of the pieces in the state's 23 best practices for permit stream, for expedited permitting, you're already doing, including the, what many towns don't do, including having an applicant come in and meet with a group of all the regulators at the same time. So, I think you're already doing a good job. This is important to us because it'll make it a lot easier to find funds like the $700,000 we got for the, for the interchange, for the stoplight at Pond Park Road and Hingham Street. It'll lead, I hope, to the kind of revenues, to, to going up higher on the, on the, on the list for the kind of revenues that we need to do, the other improvements on Hingham Street down toward, down toward Cushing that, that you have planned. And I think it's, and then finally, just from the owner's perspective, we have pulled all the owners together, I'd say Susan pulled, Sue pulled all the owners together, so the owners have talked to each other about what's needed. And I think that'll, in the long run, that'll accrue to the benefit of the town as well as you work into the other infrastructure issues you're dealing with, both traffic and water and sewer. So, it is a case, it's a case of the different groups working very carefully together, as I hope your first agenda item will work carefully together.
I suspect after a week, things will work out there. Any other comments from the audience on 43D?
No, I'd just like to add that I gotta give credit to the planning board of 15 years ago, because when that building was raised, where the bone and muscle now is located, we said, nothing's built here until a light goes in. You do recall that?
Three, three buildings were raised, and nothing went up until we found a way to put, put it in. And, and I would say, I mean, that's, that is the point, the planning, the regulatory bodies, regulatory boards can, can be very tough, and Hingham has a reputation for being very tough, and when I have an opportunity to speak, which I seem to have a lot recently, I, I say that the regulatory boards in Hingham have been difficult, you know? No, no applicant ever thinks that the board is easy, but they've been fair in large part. And that's, and that is, that is what makes Hingham a, a place where, in which it's, in which it's good, in which it's good to be an owner and good to help, help work with the town.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much.
You're no longer on a regulatory board.
What do you need from us, and do we need a public comment period on this?
There's no public comment period that has, that is requested on it, that's, because this is, this is, what this part of it really is, is administrative, that you are, you are taking what, what we proposed as the administrative method of, of putting it out there, and you're saying, yes, that's fine, basically.
Change on time.
Yeah, I was gonna say, wait a minute, this wasn't intermodal, no, just kidding.
I was gonna say, they promised us we'd never hear it, so.
So, essentially, this is, this is, this is just a, you're voting that this is the way administratively we're going to handle this.
So, you need from us a vote to adopt this?
Yes. It's, it's a vote to adopt as part of the Hingham Board of Selectmen Policies and Procedures Manual.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you, Buzz, for coming down another night.
Thank you all very much, and thank you to all the selectmen, Paul, Paul, Irma, for all your support through the years, first as committee, now selectmen, I really appreciate it, and I, and I know Mary, Mary and I.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you very much.
Where is Gary? Gary, can I flip you and the personnel board?
Irma, um, you have a vote on your agenda later regarding grants, and Mary Savage-Dunham's department is handling.
Oh, that's what you were trying to, with hand signals.
All but, all but one of them, so while she's here, do you, might I take that opportunity to ask her about those?
Let's do that. Mary, would you like to walk us through the grants? I had asked Ted with all these grants if we could share all the good news that we're trying to get money for with all of the selectmen and also for, with the people at home.
I'd be happy to. And I will start, I'm not sure if mine are in the same order as yours, so if I hop around a little bit, I apologize.
Also, could you tell us if any of these, as you're going along, have a matching?
I'd be happy to.
Okay.
At the moment, there's several grants being drafted, and within the planning department, which is what I can speak for, and I know that there's other ones underway, I'll focus on the planning department. We are working to draft a Community Innovation Challenge Grant, a CIC grant, partnering with the town of Weymouth, and this is going to be a Back River Wayfinding Program. Representative Murphy has been a champion of the Back River Reservation for years, and this is considered to be this emerald necklace of the South Shore, and there's a design plan to link all of these parks together so that instead of having four separate parks, we have one destination. And what Weymouth, the planner there, Mr. Clark, and I, and our teams have been working on, is a wayfinding program to create a cohesive signage system that would be in Hingham and in Weymouth, and it would be handicapped accessible, it would, no matter where you entered the system, you could approach the signage and see what the other resources and attractions and shops are. We'd like to have the signage be smartphone-ready, so you can scan it, and then the data that would pop up could be amended from time to time by the towns, whether we wanted to put in park profiles, restaurant locations, other attractions nearby for passive and active recreation. It really is a, a great opportunity. So, we're excited about that. There is no match required for that, which is a wonderful thing. Staff will be putting in some time on, but it's not counted towards a match, it'll be more of managing the process. That's due October 10th. We're working on a second Community Innovation Challenge Grant, again with the town of Weymouth. We're calling it the South Shore Flood Plane Management and CRS Program Initiative, and this is focusing on one of the recent hot topics, which is the impacts of the flood regulations, flood insurance, and sea level rise as it comes together to affect our coastal residents. The goal of the grant is to identify and implement a broad, broad range of strategies to prepare for and mitigate the impact of flooding and other disasters on our communities. It will help us draft, support, or augment applications for participation in the Community Rating System Program that FEMA manages. And if you remember, we talked about it last year, the CRS Program is a program that the town can apply to join. You have to earn your way in by proving to them that the town actively takes steps to mitigate the impacts of flooding. And depending on how well you score on their matrix, you can earn a community-wide percentage discount on flood insurance rates. So, we feel that's a win-win for the community.
That's a good one.
It is. It's, it's not easy. You have to do a lot to get a little, but every little bit helps, we feel. So, that's a main goal of that grant application, and we will also be wrapping in public information and outreach as well. And that's due October 10th. Another grant is the coastal community, and that one's, there's no match as well. We're working on a Coastal Community Resilience Grant for fiscal year 15. This will follow up and build off of the existing Coastal Community Resilience Grant that's underway now. And the grant that's underway now, it's the same exact program, we were recently awarded it. That work should wrap up by May 1st, and the, we're calling the fiscal year 14 program a Climate Change Vulnerability Risk Assessment and Adaptation Study. That's a technical way of saying, we're taking a look at projected sea level rise, we're factoring in average coastal storms, nor'easters, and hurricanes, and we're combining that data with the existing survey data of our coastline, we're identifying critical infrastructure within those flooding zones, and we're hoping to come up with a, it'll be a very broad kind of prioritization of the magnitude of risk for your capital facilities within the flood zones, and start to look over the longer range as a community to say, sea level's rising, what do we have at risk now? What might not be at risk now, but it could be in 20 years? So, as the selectmen think about making capital investments, with that information, you may do it differently, you may move it, you may choose to protect it in place. So, that's the fiscal year 14. So, for the fiscal year 15 grant, we're looking to build off of the data that we collect and gather in that grant, add it into other existing condition data along the harbor front with the current conditions of our wharves and structures, and then apply for design and engineering money to say, okay, we know that this is what's happening now with the level of the water, here's the projected sea level rise, we know this is the condition of our existing facilities, here's the relative order of magnitude for cost and priority. Now, we would like to have X number of dollars to design and permit the identified priorities. And that would be the fiscal year 15 grant, that's due October 10th. That requires a 25% match, either in-kind services or cash. And so, when you're applying for design and permitting money, that doesn't go very far. If we were to apply for $100,000, we would require $25,000 or some portion thereof. Certainly, the team could put in some work that would bring down, be some in-kind match, but there would be a financial match required. And another grant that's currently being prepared for submittal October 10th is the Phase 2 of the Walton's Cove Project. Phase 1 of the Walton's Cove Project is underway now, and right now, that project is looking at the Crow Point area, and it's looking at sediment that's getting into our harbor. How can we slow or stop the transport of sediment that's impacting our coastal waters? It's looking at stormwater management, and there's a good, strong, public outreach component associated with that. What we're proposing to do in Phase 2 is to build off of Phase 1 and look at restoring some of the currently restricted tidal flushing. We're looking to maintain or manage sediment that's leaving private property, and then hopefully in fiscal year 16, when there's some road sections that are repaired, we'd like to also construct a rain garden. So, this also has a match component to it. We feel that we'll be able to get most of that through in-kind services, and the amount of the Walton Cove's Phase 2 project overall, we anticipate will be approximately $20,000. So, we'll need about a $5,000 match for either construction in-kind services or dollars. We're working very hard to try to not have to ask for any money for that, and we think that we can. Another grant that is not due October 10th, but it's coming up, and it's another kind of redo grant, it's a CTPS proposal. We brought this forward last year. Actually, Roger Fernandez did the bulk of the work on this. I participated in it, but really the credit goes to him for the design and really championing it. We applied for a, to make a simple, kind of a complete streets corridor study from Hingham down to Hull. Unfortunately, Hull was awarded the money, and Hingham was kind of cut out. So, we are okay with that. They encouraged us to come back again this year and just reduce our scope. So, what we've talked about is doing a corridor study from North Street to Summer Street to look at ways to connect the downtown to the harbor, and to put pedestrian, walkways, and bikeways along the harbor front, and just make it a more friendly environment. This would be not construction, it would be design, and there's not a match associated with that. It's just the, we'll need some help trying to get it this year. And was there anyone on my list?
I, I've got one more.
And there's one other grant, the Harbor Master couldn't be here tonight. He is working and taking the lead on this with a group of communities along the South Shore to deal with the, a recent threat of great white sharks along the South Shore, and how to manage that public discourse. Because, of course, you see it on the news, and then everybody stops talking about everything but that. And, and the Harbor Masters want to talk to folks about, you know, how they should, should try to react in these situations as best as possible.
Oh, these are great. Excellent.
I, I want to thank you for this. I think this is great, right up the right alley. Well done.
Great, thank you.
Just Ted, on the, on the Great White Shark Initiative, is that, what's the grants we're looking for there? Do you know?
So, the grant is a collaboration of the Harbor Masters along the South Shore, and, you know, we've had sightings in Duxbury, you know, and in Plymouth, and so, they want to produce informational bulletins, pamphlets, and other documentation, and other ways to communicate to the public about the threats, about the differentiations. There are other things in the ocean that may look like that but aren't, and, you know, how to behave, and, and just a variety of things to help people understand what's going on. And so, the, the Harbor Masters felt that they needed some outreach because they were getting inundated with calls about this.
So, the, every town that's involved will be seeking grants as well?
Well, actually, just one, all towns will be coming together, and Hingham is gonna be the lead community of those towns.
Oh, nice. I like this. Thank you very much for bringing this, because this is not something that normally passes through us, that we don't hear about them until maybe we get the money. This is great news, and especially to the people listening, to say, we're looking for places to get money other than taxpayer dollars. So, you just need us to vote this?
The grants that I'm...
Yeah, all of these, in the past, the board has, you need to vote to designate the authorization to sign these grants before October 10th.
Yeah.
Sorry. I move we authorize the chairman to sign grant applications for the following. One, a regional approach to dealing with the threat of great white sharks along the South Shore. Two, joint program with the town of Weymouth for wayfinding signs along the Back River. Three, a coastal resiliency program dealing with rising sea levels to follow and build on the Coastal Community Resiliency Grant currently underway. Four, Walton's Cove Phase 2 Stormwater Project, including engineering... Four, Walton's Cove Phase Two Stormwater Project, including engineering and design as well as community outreach and education. Five, a comprehensive trails plan scope project. And six, South Shore Flood Plane Management and CRS Program Initiative, a regional effort to identify and implement a broad range of strategies to prepare for and mitigate the impact of flooding and other disasters.
Second.
Thank you.
Are you out of breath?
We've got a lot going on tonight. I just want to move through it.
I know. I apologize. We're running late. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mary. Thank you very much. Now, I'm still going to flip, if Gary doesn't mind. David, please come up with your team.
And a couple of us.
And we're so happy to have the Personnel Board. I see most of you. Many, most? I see Nelson, Mary Jane, Jack, Marie.
Russell.
Russell. Uh-huh. Who's missing? Anybody missing?
This thing's getting thicker and thicker.
I'm here, Jane. Good work.
Those are great initiatives, too.
Yeah, wonderful.
Seriously.
This is great.
Mary Jane, you're not going to get left out.
Oh, she's moving out. She's more comfortable. She's trying to hide.
I like it. We didn't hear that over the microphones, did we?
We're a very comfortable group up here. We like each other. We get along well.
David, welcome. And if you'd introduce everyone?
Thank you. I will. My name is David Pace with the Personnel Board. I'm here with other members of the Personnel Board, Russ Kahn, Mary Jane O'Mara, Jack Manning, Marie Harris, and special guest, longtime, maybe lifetime member of the Personnel Board.
I like the word lifetime.
Nelson Ross, who retired from the Personnel Board a couple of years ago after many, many years, but has been gracious and kind and generous with his time to help us over the last two years with collective bargaining and many other Personnel Board matters. And we're very grateful for him and lucky to have him. So anyways, thank you for the opportunity to be here. I think it's always healthy for the Personnel Board and the Board of Selectmen to meet periodically to kind of talk about our role within town government and talk about any current matters or things that might be on your mind. I think it's especially good when we have some relatively new members of the Board of Selectmen who may not have worked with us in the past to understand what it is we do, we actually do here. So I plan to just give a brief overview of what we do.
That'd be great.
With a little help from Maria Nelson, and then see if anybody has any questions. So I think, you know, just to note, we are a creature of statute in town meeting, and we're an appointed board. And our role, therefore, is somewhat limited. In essence, what we do is administer the town's personnel bylaw and its wage classification and salary plan. The Personnel Bylaw is, in essence, in many ways, is in a company, it's like your employee handbook. It governs the terms and conditions of employment for all employees of the town who are not members of a union, so that is, in large part, many of the people who work in this building. And it will govern things like vacation time, sick policy, personal days, transfers, promotions, and items like that. As part of our role, we periodically, with David Basler, the head of Human Resources, will review the Personnel Bylaws to see what may need updating. We work pretty hard to make sure there's a fairness and a consistency across all town employees in our -- excuse me, in the town's policies. We will also, on an annual basis, recommend to the town any annual salary increase for town employees. Again, employees are not members of a union or collectively bargained. And I think without, there's two important things to note. One is that we recommend. We don't have decision-making authority. We recommend a town meeting for decision at town meeting, what to do with either amendments to the bylaws or salary raises. And secondly, although occasionally, we're not really -- not a human resources board, we're a Personnel Board. We're not like a personnel, a human resource department in a company handling all human resource matters. We really administer the wage classification and bylaws. The other key function that we serve is in collective bargaining. And it's pretty unique to the town of Hingham in that we do this. But we really act on behalf of the Board of Selectmen in collective bargaining with the unions in the town, other than the schools, so the police patrol, the police superiors, the fire, the library, and the DPW. And this is something that has been put in place long before me. I think Tom L. Donald deserves credit, maybe 45 years ago or so, in putting this in place, and it has served the town very well. As we all know from reading the newspapers, The Globe or Herald in particular, that collective bargaining negotiations can be kind of a political hotbed sometimes. And so it helps to kind of focus on the issues at hand. And I think what it does very successfully is puts the Board of Selectmen in the decision-making role with respect to collective bargaining and puts the Personnel Board in the front line in terms of negotiating, very similar to a company that would have a CEO who is your decision-maker but wouldn't sit at the table negotiating. And as I said, it's unique to Hingham, I think. I'm not sure of any other town that does it, and it's served well in terms of, I think, labor relations. And also financially, I think many other towns hire outside counsel to represent them at the bargaining table. And so I think each year that we bargain, and over the years, we've saved substantial sum of money for the town by taking on the responsibility, happily do so. So hopefully, it's worked well. So with that, Maria was going to talk a little bit about our wage and classification plan, and then Nelson, a little bit about collective bargaining, and questions.
As David said, the Personnel Board administers the Personnel Bylaw, and the wage and classification plan comes under the Personnel Bylaw. But a little background, in 2001, the town brought in Bennett Human Resources consultants specializing in wage and compensation. And Bennett worked with the managers and the non-union employees and gave them the tools to analyze the essential functions of the job so that they could then determine the duties and responsibilities and put together a job description that would accurately reflect the duties and responsibilities that they were doing. The Human Resources Director then put the job descriptions together and brought them to the Personnel Board to be approved. Bennett, at this time, also put together a point factor evaluation system for rating positions in order to determine where a position should be placed on the salary scale. And this system produced -- provided us with a structure so that we could accurately place positions on the salary scale in a fair and equitable manner. And one of Bennett's recommendations going forward was that we review approximately 20% of the positions each year so that over a period of five years, all of the positions would be evaluated and updated, and as positions evolve, they change, so that they would -- the job descriptions would be current. And lastly, the administering of the wage and classification plan is actually a work in progress. And David Basler, the Human Resources Director, has done a good job working with managers, bringing things to the Personnel Board, and keeping things moving forward. So that's about all I have, and turn it over to Nelson.
Okay. Thank you. I might say, in my 43 years being involved with the Personnel Board, there was no occasion when town meeting voted no on something that the Personnel Board brought forward. That includes salary increases, changes in benefit programs, and that's been very rewarding. Matter of fact, I can't remember a question being raised.
Don't jinx us, Nelson.
Okay, let me talk about collective bargaining. As David said, Personnel Board bargains at the behest of the selectmen and under the direction of the selectmen. We work very closely with the town administrator. For many years, he was the liaison between the Personnel Board and the Board of Selectmen. About three or four years ago, he began to join us at the bargaining table. And that has worked out very, very well because we can make decisions. He's talked with the selectmen, he's talked with you, he knows how far we can go, and that has been a real asset in the process. The Personnel Board in negotiations only goes as far as the Board of Selectmen is willing to have the Personnel Board go. At the beginning of the process, if we're getting ready for a round of negotiations, the Personnel Board meets with the Board of Selectmen and the Advisory Committee, and we talk about what are the economic constraints, what are the financial constraints, and what should our goals be with regard to the economics. When we begin a set of negotiations, we meet with the department head, we go over the collective bargaining agreement, which is a 30 or 40-page document, very carefully drafted. I drafted most of them. And we find out what are the areas in the agreement that are causing concern, aren't working well, what should we propose as the town's proposals. And so then we come to the bargaining table, and we work very hard, as does the union team, to work through the particular issues, the proposals, determining which ones are really the priorities, and determining how we're going to respond to each of their proposals and what are our priorities. And that's a process that can go on for several months or more. And I have to say that, in my view, we work on our side very hard to maintain, for the benefit of the selectmen and the town, good labor relations. We are very fortunate to have leadership on the town unions that brings the same attitude to the bargaining table. We're about to begin -- we have all of our contracts settled except the firefighters. We're about to start that negotiations, actually, this coming week. Bill McIntyre is here, longtime president of the Firefighters Union, somebody who works very hard to maintain collaborative negotiations, collaborative relationships. It's not to say we don't have disagreements, and we, you know, they are represented by very competent counsel, but we are able to -- have been able to work through, you know, the issues and come up with mutually agreeable settlements. Our philosophy, it's always been the philosophy of Hingham, is to give respect to the other side, and they give us respect. And that's the formula for good labor relations. There are two fundamental principles: always tell the truth and be credible. If the union believes that what you're telling them is truthful and credible, then you will be able to advance the position of the town. We know that. And that's a fundamental principle for us. And we have -- I have three tests for the outcome of negotiations. Was the outcome fair? Not that we got everything we wanted, or they got everything they wanted, but was it a fair outcome? Secondly, was the process a good process? You can have a fair outcome, but the process was terrible. That's not a good negotiations. And the icing on the cake, if you can get it, is that the relationship between the parties at the end of negotiations was better than when you started. If you can say that, it's been a great negotiations. And that's what we, as a board, I'm counting myself as still part of the board, that's what we strive for. We usually have three members of our group as the bargaining team for particular negotiations. And one thing that I want to mention is collective bargaining, particularly as it relates to salary, is a search for standards. What are the standards by which we measure what's a fair settlement? In Hingham, we are very, very fortunate. We have a group, and have had a group, of 20 towns that we have used, both parties have used, to measure where our salary rate should be. We look at the maximum rate for a particular job, and we determine what the median rate is, and we want to be above the median, just above the median in the second quartile. And if we are low for a particular job, then we will go to the selectmen, town administrator, and then selectmen, and say, we think there ought to be an equity adjustment here before any general increase. And other towns have to debate, you know, the union will say, well, we should be comparing with this town. And the town will say, no, we should be comparing with these communities. We don't have to go through that, and we are unique in that respect. These 20 towns have existed, actually, as our standard for comparison for 50 years. As we get ready for negotiations, David Basler plays a key role. He does the comparisons for us with the other towns with regard to salaries, with regard to any issues that may arise, like, let's say, that the union is seeking improved, increased vacation. You know, we look at, okay, where do we compare? How do we compare? And so we have, I think, a good system that has worked well for the town. Negotiations have not been, I think, politicized, as is the case in some towns. I will say also that there are times when we are not able to reach agreement, and we have to seek a mediator's help. Where's Jim Costello? There he is. Jim, I know Jim from way back. He came, he is a resident of Hingham. He was a state mediator, and he helped us with a number of the negotiations that -- where we needed outside assistance. So we have worked very hard to maintain strong management rights. If you read our agreement, it protects the rights of the town so that our department heads can operate efficiently and effectively. So I could go on for hours. I've said enough. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Oh, we are so lucky to have all of you. And Nelson, I sure hope the word lifetime -- He keeps thinking he's going to slide away.
We're not letting him.
No, none of us are. None of us are.
No, I have to say this. It's been an honor for me to represent the selectmen through these years. It has been, has always been easy, takes a lot of time and effort, but to know that we have good labor relations in Hingham means a lot.
As my network of selectmen and others increases, the one thing that, when we get around to talking about labor and contracts, when they find out we have a Personnel Board and the kind of people that are on there, and you mentioned Nelson's name, and across the Commonwealth, everybody perks up. So Nelson, you're well-known.
Well.
But other towns would love to have the type of arrangement and the type of committee that we have here. So thank you. And you're so well-paid, right? Just so folks at home understand, this is a purely volunteer board. So the amount of time and the hours that you put in and the effort is huge. So I'll open it up, and then I had a couple of conversations with David this week, so I'll open it up to the two of you.
I don't have much to add. I was on the Wage Committee on the opposite side of Mr. Ross. I enjoyed the experience thoroughly.
All right, my sympathy, Nelson.
What?
Were you on, were you really, on the bargaining table?
Oh, yes.
That's awesome.
It was a long time ago.
It was a long time ago. He was a very strong member.
You're kind.
I just want to, most of you I've probably seen but don't really know, and a couple of folks I know fairly well. It's always good to see everybody. And, but I want to thank you all for putting in the time, and people don't realize in many of these committees how much time and effort is put in as a volunteer. It's amazing. But I want to just especially thank you guys for coming tonight, folks, because not only is it helpful to me as a new member of the Board of Selectmen to kind of see you and listen to you and kind of understand exactly what you do, but I think it's good for people in the audience, and especially for people at home that may not have any contact with you folks at all, just to see what a good job you're doing. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Definitely. A couple of things. I want to recognize the work you did with the library job descriptions. As the library, Marie? Three cheers for Marie.
And David.
And David, David. The evolving world of the library is amazing, and the changing nature of the skill set that you need to have to work in the that you need to have to work in the library. I think you all have done a phenomenal job there.
Thank you.
And I know there's more work to come, but it very, very greatly appreciated, and it sets us aside from all the other libraries around it. We're way ahead of the curve on this one.
It's true.
We do have a wonderful library, and Dennis has done a great job leading it.
Definitely. He's got a great staff.
I can't say enough about the department heads that we work with. Mark Duff is here. He's been terrific in preparing for negotiations. Dennis does a great job. Mike Perino, Mike's still here, too. Okay. I mean, we could not do what we do without them, so.
Now, a couple of things.
Thank you for saying that.
We are very lucky.
We are.
I think that's part of what makes Hingham so special.
Yeah.
A couple of things that I talked with David about. We're all, three of us, new. And, gosh, I think I'm the only one now, or used, are we used now?
Well, new at what?
At this whole concept of municipal bargaining and, because we come from different places.
I had red hair when I was dealing.
You can it. You can again.
Yeah, okay. We've talked about that.
Yes, we did. We can fix that problem. I asked David if it would be possible if the personnel board would review all of our personal contracts and special arrangements, to give us feedback on what other towns are doing within our 20-town, and where do we stand on some of the special arrangements and personal contracts. We seem to have a lot of them, more so, not to say that they're bad or anything, but just feedback to us on what could be different, where we might go the next time these contracts are up. So would that be something? And I'd ask my colleagues, would that be helpful? I know it would be helpful to me.
Sure. Thanks.
That's the first I've heard of it. I'd like to flush that out in greater detail to see exactly what you are thinking about, but I'm happy to discuss it at a future date.
Cool. But you all could be able to do that.
Yeah, suppose we take a look at them, you know, as I mentioned, you know, we have some expertise in employment contracts, but municipal employment contracts and the specific terms, you know, we'd have to do a little diligence to kind of find out what's out there, so.
And that's what I would be interested in hearing.
Sure.
What's different? And are we, is that where the trend is going in municipal government? More personal contracts than wage tables? So, and then the second, and I didn't have time because we were in Boston today on Aquarian litigation. There's a package put together by the Government Study Committee, two years ago now, three years ago maybe, and it came about when we started looking into, should Hingham have a town manager versus a town administrator? And save the emails, we're not going there, because it involves a rather significant change. But what we found was, the job description for the town administrator, we had several of them, and the thought was, we would like the personnel board's help to come up with a single job description, and to somehow incorporate into it the delegated powers. And a rather large package was put together. But I would like to ask the personnel board if that's something you could help us with?
Well, I guess, a couple of thoughts. One, I think job descriptions are typically, as Marie said, put together by the manager and the employee themselves. And the personnel board's role is to kind of review them and then kind of, you know, see where they place in the wage classification salary system. The town administrator's not really part of that.
Right.
System. I mean, I think, we haven't talked about it, I think, and want to get other people's opinions, but, you know, in terms of looking at it, sure, but I do think, you know, in the first instance, it really is, you know, the question becomes for the selectmen, I think, as to what that role is and what powers they want to delegate to the town administrator, and we can help memorialize that, but it's kind of not our authority to kind of say what those roles are and what that power should be.
And this all stemmed from, long before Ted, so BT, before Ted. The documentation of the delegated powers was very difficult to find, and actually Scott Ford was one of the ones working on this, pulling it together, and he's very detail-oriented. So, and I'll provide the package to the two of you. Ted, do you remember the package at all?
No, I'm sorry, I don't.
Okay. I have it. I'll send it electronically, and then perhaps we can talk about this again.
Mm-hmm.
That would be great.
Okay.
Because it was an interesting exercise. It seemed so academic when we started it, and a group did call around and get what a town administrator does versus a town manager, and there was no commonality, and we figured Hingham was in great shape, until we found out couldn't backtrack a lot of it.
I don't know, Nelson.
I will, I will say, I was on, I think, the screening committee for town administrator, and our consultant asked us, "Do you have a charter?" We said, "No." "Well, do you have a bylaw that expresses what the town administrator's role will be, the particular, you know, authorities that he or she would be able to exercise?" There was, there is no bylaw. Charlie Costello did meet with the selectmen at one point, and there was a list of authorities that he could carry out, and that was his role, had covered things like hiring and, you know, and that document exists someplace, and I don't, you know, I don't know that it's, it's been utilized recently. I will, I will say this, that the authority that town administrator will have, as David said, is really dependent upon what authority the selectmen decide the town administrator should have in Hingham. It would be very advantageous to decide what that is and put it down in some form, particularly because otherwise, how's a town administrator going to know, you know, what his authority is?
But also, as new selectmen come on.
Yeah.
The presumptive nature of, well, I assumed that's what he or she did.
Right.
And I'll give one example. Two years ago, we delegated to Ted the ability to spend $5,000 in legal expenses without coming to the board. That's not in any job description.
No.
Because it's new. And if the three of us hit the lottery, we're out of here. Not that we would ever do.
That's for sure.
That's for sure. Would you get your hair red first?
No.
Not that we would do that, of course, but whoever follows us, there's nothing there to say, "This is, this is the document." So I'll send the document, because I never lose anything. Sometimes just can't find it.
What are we doing?
I'll send it to the two of you, and then if you agree, to Nelson's point, I do think it would be worthwhile if they would be willing to help us to put a cohesive, single document together. Mr. Gee?
That's fine. I'm the new member, so I, you know, obviously, any information is good for me.
I'm not saying no to anything. I'll read what you got, and if I agree with it, I'll tell you, and if I don't, I'll tell you that, too.
Well, with that, I really can't thank you enough for what you all do. And you heard it on TV, Nelson said lifetime.
I didn't say it. He said it. David said it.
David said it. I echoed it. We could all, we could always take a vote right here.
I think my wife is watching at home, and she may have something to say about that.
Uh-oh. Can we negotiate, please? Thank you all so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary, thank you so much. Come on up. And while you're making your way up here on the subcommittee, now that we are the working group, or whatever we're calling this group, Mr. Healy, you are our representative, because it's under the planning board.
Thank you very much.
I asked Gary to come and talk to us tonight and also to the audience. This is potentially one of the most interesting bylaw changes, if it happens, and it will be the result of the committee that he is forming, that will go to town meeting as a planning board warrant article this year. So let me turn it over to Gary. Tell us about it, and then invite the public to come to your hearings.
I will. Thank you, Madam Chair, fellow members of the board. I'd like to identify myself, Gary Tondor Fick, 1029 Main Street. I'm currently the chair of the planning board, and I would like to present to the selectmen and to the audience a proposed initiative by the planning board to form a study group to review the town's existing housing bylaws and consider a potential zoning amendment that would allow accessory residential dwelling units under certain conditions, and the study group will discuss the need, assessment, and feasibility of permitting accessory units, and discuss a potential bylaw change for consideration by the planning board in November. So we have a somewhat short timeframe to do this study. In addition to the Board of Selectmen representative, and welcome, well, the following people were identified by the planning board as members of this study group. Myself from the planning board, Joseph Freeman from the Board of Appeals, Bruce Catman from the Health Department, Eileen Calnutt from the Affordable Housing Trust, Linda Koch from the Advisory Committee, and we have several at-large citizen members, Mark Cullings, Eileen Richards, Marco Gore, Virginia Winslow, Richard Cook, and Laura Marwell. In addition, without which we couldn't conduct the committee, we have support from the Community Planning Department team. That would be Building Inspector Michael Clancy, Emily Wentworth, and Mary Savage-Dunham. The meetings have been tentatively scheduled for Thursday, October 16th, Wednesday, October 22nd, and Wednesday, November 5th. All meetings are proposed to be from 6:30 PM.
You were meeting the 16th.
In Town Hall. And we welcome the input from members of the community at all of our meetings. So I guess the first question is, why, at this point, is the, is the study committee important on this issue? There are a number of parameters that we've looked at, and there are convergence of parameters, both in terms of what citizens of the town have asked us to look at, and secondly, and equally important, we're also doing a current review and revision and update of the town's master plan, and in that, housing and the demographics of the town's population are center points, and we're trying to respond in such a way where we can make sure that there are appropriate housing opportunities for all segments of the town. Some of the items that we're going to be looking at, first of all, it's accessory residential units in existing homes is the primary focus. A number of other components have come up as questions and items to be included. One is accessory units in detached accessory structures, like a barn. There's a provision to consider, an amnesty provision for existing accessory units. There are a number of accessory units in the town that were grandfathered, because they're in buildings or houses that were built prior to the adoption of the town's bylaw in 1941. And then there's also a number of accessory units that are in houses that haven't been documented and haven't been permitted but have evolved over time. One of the reasons that this is important, and this consideration has come from the life safety professionals in the town, is that, for example, if there's an emergency at a certain dwelling, whether it's a fire or a police emergency, if a house is not a single family, there's a question of the ability to respond to everyone. But I think the, in our meeting on September 22nd, and we also had a meeting in July, July 12th, a number of people, citizens of the town, came forward and said that, you know, as the demographics of the town is aging, there are a number of people who lived in their houses for a long time in the town, and they'd like to continue living in their houses, their circumstances such fixed income, or aging, or other circumstances, and also the request that their adult children could perhaps live in the house with them, was put in front of the planning board as a reason why we should take a look at studying this issue. And so the planning board decided that it was very important to listen, and so for those reasons, we have formed a study committee to vet this issue and see what we might propose relative to potential bylaw revision.
Now, we voted this committee, but a smaller version of it. Was it the last time? Do we need to revote this, or?
No, the Board of Selectmen never voted this committee.
We voted one under the ZBA. This was, Emily Wentworth gave us a committee.
Yeah, Ms. Wentworth gave us a committee suggestion. I recommended to you that you make that appointment last week. You deferred to Mr. Gary Tondor Fick today, so.
So do you need a vote from us, or just a vote to say we support you investigating?
Hope to have an endorsement if we could.
Oh, that's easy. That's very easy. I'd just like to add a couple of things.
Okay.
Gary, thank you very much for picking this up. As you know, this is something that I've agitated over the years to do, and I'm glad to see so much interest in it now. Planning board is the logical board to do it. Planning board introduces zoning bylaw changes at town meeting, has the expertise to look into the matter, identify unintended consequences, seems to be a phrase we use a lot on the planning board. So I look forward to this. This is a big committee, but, you know, so is the advisory committee, some say, and they do a pretty good job, too, so.
They do a very good job. Let me clarify that. Sorry.
No problem.
Little pride and ownership there.
Yep, got it.
Paul.
Gary, how you doing?
Thank you.
Good. So is this issue been looked at before in the town, or by study or otherwise?
It's come up on the radar screen, but it's never been formally studied relative to the ramifications, the opportunities, the constraints, the consequences, whether intended or unintended, and if it is, you know, it's a need that needs to be addressed. The question is, how do we address it, and what do we do?
Are there other towns that we'll look at as to see if they're comparable to us?
Yes, we've looked at a number of towns in terms of how they approach this. One of the towns we've looked at is Lexington, which is a town that's very similar to us in terms of its, our demographics. And Lexington has some very interesting bylaw provisions. They have a residential overlay bylaw that achieves this kind of flexibility by special permit under certain conditions. They also do overlay districts. This wouldn't be necessarily that, but they have, they've done a lot of, as an example, a lot of work on this. Wellesley has, too.
Well, I wish you luck on, I just, I'm sure I'll have more questions as time goes by.
And Gary, I want to thank you, and Paul, too, from a planning board standpoint. I think that is the right place for this. And I also see this as hopefully an opportunity to save some of our larger houses, where perhaps there's a super-large barn, and maybe some of our senior citizens are in these older houses, these very special houses, that this is a way to preserve these, and for a long time to come. So tell us what you need. You certainly have my endorsement. You have Mr. Healy and Mr. Gannon.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to working on it.
So, and to everyone at home, this is your invite to come to these meetings and speak your piece. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for letting us juggle you around.
Quite all right. Learned a lot.
You can come back anytime. Ted, Mr. Healy and I just caucused, we're going to put goals and objectives, if Mr. Gannon agrees, off till next week.
Sure.
And I think we've pretty much filled up the agenda. Betty and I were worried there wasn't going to be enough, but now we've got Foss coming back, goals and objectives, and I know we've got next week an update on the Aquarian litigation. So how about you doing the five-year forecast?
Sure. Second, I'm trying to find my copy of what you did. It's not in my folder.
You have one to follow along, so if Betty or Sharon could find one.
I'll share.
Maybe, wait a second.
I might have.
Here, I'll share with.
We can share one.
Yeah, we'll share.
Let me get mine, I have it out here.
We're good.
Got it.
I knew Sharon would not do that. Operator, Eric.
Make sure you put that as a joint.
I'm going to do that.
Okay. Do you want me to put this up on here to?
So you need an extra copy. I'll still share. Here you go.
I can talk from here, I'm sorry.
You sure?
Bob, I'm not sure how well you can see this.
Not very.
I know that I'll be presenting this again to the Advisory Committee next week. I believe they're also going to be televising it, and hopefully we'll be able to get it out there to the public again. So this is going to be a really difficult one for folks to see, because I can see the TV from here and I'm sure that they cannot see that at home. The five-year forecast for next year, as it initially starts out for fiscal '16, projects a, and I'll just drop to the bottom line, a surplus of $290,237. Now, that's a pretty large number for us to have at this point in time in the year. I'll also let you know that all the out-years are showing positive here. And we're going to be making some changes to that, likely in the next couple of weeks that will reduce those surpluses. And I'll explain to you in a second about that. But this is a very preliminary forecast. It's the, you know, really the first initial one. It'll be modified once more before it goes out to department heads as part of the budget package in the next couple of weeks. And the highlights would be standard growth estimates that we've had in the past, a new growth estimate that we'll be able to, we think, realize of $850,000 this year for projects that we have in the pipeline and have already been identified and are in construction. We have a level funding of state aid of $10 million from the prior year. And at this point in time, this process in October, we don't see anything on the horizon from the state that would suggest they would cut aid. Their revenues seem to be consistent. And so I think there could be opportunities for growth in there. I will tell you, though, that historically, the first year of a new governor has not done well for local aid. Virtually every governor, doesn't matter, you know, what party affiliation. So now that also is the economic cycle sometimes that couples with that, because some of those changes have coupled with economic cycles, and that also changes. But right now, I think prudence would say you level fund your state aid. Our local receipts are essentially level funded right now, and on the second and third page, you'll see a much greater detail of what those revenues are. The significant one is motor vehicle exercise. And I would actually just jump to that page right now to show you. This is a 10-year history of local receipts. It's the last page that you have in your package, has numbers up top, and two smaller charts on the bottom. So literally, there's probably no hope for anybody to see this at home. I think what we want to do in the future, I'm going to try to do this when we can access the AV aid, so that people can see it directly through the feed.
That's a good idea. So the next time you do, I think that's a really good idea.
And so on motor vehicle, you know, many people have read in the paper, I'm sure, that car sales in '14 returned to pre-2009 levels. However, while experts predict that car sales will do well next year, they're expecting flat sales out for the next several years. And so that's significant for us. Of our 8.5 approximate million dollars of local receipts, 3.7 of it is forecast to be coming in from motor vehicles, so almost half. And we won't find out about this revenue source for fiscal '15, and now we're planning on '16, until January, end of January, when the Motor, Regio Motor Vehicles gives us the first commitment, which represents about 80% of our annual collections. So right about then, we'll have a really good idea of what, at least the receivable side of it is. We're pretty consistent in Hingham with what the collectibles are and the receivables. So we can usually garner whether that number's going up or down from that end of January first receipt. And the trend has been up, as you can see. We've gone, you know, from 2009, we were at 3,062,000, and now we're at 3.7 million. So it's been a steady increase. Right now, at this point in time, we're leaving it level funded, and we'll wait, as we usually do, until January to see if we have a sense of a change there. There are no other significant local receipts, I'd point out to you, that would change, other than to say that I think we're starting to see a peak and a leveling off of ambulance fees and license and permits. The ambulances are running more and more than they have in the past, but the revenue is flattening because the federal government, which is our largest customer through Medicare, is deciding that, you know, essentially, they're going to pay us 50 cents on the dollar. They deem the service is valued at this level regardless of what our own cost estimates, our own cost values are of that. And so that's impacting those revenues dramatically as it shifts to those who have private insurance. License and permits are predominantly building permits, and there's a modest increase here. Over the last few years, we've seen this increase. But I would caution you that as you look for revenue to meet your expenditure needs, this is an area that you want to be very careful not to go much further than we are right here, because as you know from several years back, building permits can stop. And they can stop in a hurry and drop off the table. I think it was in '05 and '06 that we needed to begin, actually, it was the '06 budget cycle, we had to begin peeling back almost a million dollars of building permits that we had built into the base. And so we certainly don't want to repeat that era if the economic cycle changes. I think that pretty much encapsulates the revenue picture. On the expenditure side of the forecast, and that, of course, is what drives these numbers on the bottom, these surpluses, and we're forecasting a 2% increase across the board. And again, that is not a recommendation as to what you should or shouldn't spend, but it's an attempt to allocate the existing revenues as we see them. So if you expended your resources at a 2% salary and expense across the board, considering that some of your budgets, like healthcare, retirement, OPEB, and Medicare taxes, along with debt service, will move to their own paces, and they very rarely are those 2% paces, although we've had great experience with healthcare for the last few years. So again, it's not saying that you're going to just summarily give 2% to every single department, but if you were to allocate expenditures at a 2% level, this is what you would see. Now, what I mentioned earlier, the most significant thing is that, you know, we did our first forecast just last week. The assessors are working with me to help develop our growth estimates for the out-years. And what I can tell you right now is that the 850,000 that we've been forecasting for a number of years is just not there for fiscal '18, '19, and '20. Traditionally, our growth estimates are built on a combination of, sort of a collection of small permits that the community profile has been in the $300,000 to $400,000 range for several decades now. And those are small additions to residential properties and, you know, pools, sheds, things like decks that might change the remodel, expanded bedroom, et cetera. We then take the remaining growth, and we focus that very specifically on the projects that are in the pipeline. So Back River, Black Rock, the shipyard, you know, earlier in our economic cycle, Derby Street Shops, Two Pond Park that you spoke about earlier. The dilemma we have is that all those projects are nearing completion, and there are no new ones on the horizon. While there's talk of economic development in the south of Hingham, the lack of utility infrastructures has really stymied significantly significant growth, and you're seeing some flattening. So while we see the car dealership going in there, that will hit growth in '17, and there's nothing else there. And in order for us to put something in for '18, '19, or '20, we actually need to start seeing permits coming in the doors soon. We're not even seeing plans significantly in front of the Planning Board at the level that we have right now. So, you know, I want to give you a wake-up call that if you want to see these numbers on the bottom, you're either going to have to reduce expenses or increase your revenue in some fashion.
Ted, can you address under the sources, the unused levy capacity?
Sure. Last year, the Board, as part of its tax initiative packages, decided to start building unused levy capacity. And the Advisory Committee and ultimately Town Meeting adopted a budget along with that. And what that essentially means is that we are just simply not going to tax to the full extent that we're entitled to for property and personal property taxes. And right now, that amount is 500,000 for fiscal '16.
But it's still sitting out there.
Correct. And it's a revenue source that if you wanted to utilize it, you could certainly utilize it.
Okay. I think that needs to be fully understood by everybody in all of the budget agencies that we're going to be working with. I know the Advisory Committee understands it, because Mary Power and I have had several conversations about how do we manage this, and how do we make people aware it's sitting out there that could be used at any time without anyone's permission.
So my understanding is the Advisory Committee, I'd made the recommendation to them last year, and I think they're taking that up, is that they need to amend the town's financial policies, which really, you know, starts with them, to address unused levy capacity. We've always had unused levy capacity. It's been with us always at some level, but at a much smaller level and not designed to be larger and grow. So the Board last year decided they wanted to see it start growing. And my recommendation was, now that you're going to have a new activity, that you ought to start thinking about what kind of rules you want to put around it before someone else makes a proposal that you haven't really considered, some of the ramifications.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have any questions?
I think it just highlights the importance of the South Hingham Working Group to figure out what we can do to increase the opportunity for sensible growth.
That was a very interesting meeting this week, and what I came away with is, nobody's got actionable plans yet.
Although it was interesting, because the Bristols did put their dime down in a way that they have not done so until this point. And there was some interesting discussion. It will be followed up, it will be fleshed out in greater detail, they just concepts. But I think it demonstrates the importance of working in a similar fashion to the way we did with Paul Trendowitz and Samuels and Associates. That was a collaborative effort, Shipyard, took 10 years, but we're getting there.
Which all I could think of, and Dick Cook pointed out that he didn't see anything happening in South Hingham for six to eight years, based on the Shipyard. So that is a great concern when you look at our revenue picture coming out. Mr. G, anything?
Nothing.
Nope? Cool. We'll wait for the next. I think this is one of the only years I've ever seen the first forecast with a positive number. Chief Duff, come on up. Everybody knows you, but formality-wise.
Fire chief. Just with respect to the unused levy capacity, when Ted, when you make the presentation next week or whatever, probably a more detailed explanation of exactly what that is would be helpful. I have no ideas at first. I've heard of it, and I have a feeling that residents are the same way. So I'd appreciate a more detailed explanation. Thank you.
Thank you for asking the question. Everybody at home's going, what's unused levy capacity?
Before I came, did you mention the press direction of the water ban, Madam Chairman?
I have, in our reports, I have to read it.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And kudos to Mark. He has been watching and communicating, is that a nice way to say it, with Aquarian watching the level of our tanks, so that we don't have any surprises anytime soon. Cool. Ted, do you want to take us down through these votes?
Sure. The first vote that you have is a, it's a transfer request for $9,500 for additional services regarding the Broad Cove flood elevations. This is the fourth request for additional information that we received from FEMA. And my recommendation to the Board, as you know, I've made it to you earlier, Mr. Chairman, is that we procure the services in spite of the fact that it seems like every time we ask, answer the questions they ask, they ask us a new question. You know, at this point in time, I think it would be wise to do two things. One, approve the transfer, begin the work. The residents are at great risk if we can't change those flood maps. But I think we need a little bit of assistance, and I'd ask that you make contact with Congressman Lynch's office and ask if he helps with us to work through some of the difficulties we're having in managing this process.
I'll do that.
Thank you.
I owe him a thank you for something else, so.
Motion.
Yep, motion.
Move that we recommend a transfer from the Reserve Fund to the Selectmen's Engineering Account in the amount of $9,500 for additional services regarding the Broad Cove flood level elevation.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The next item is an item that you've already discussed in the past. I know that the Board has rejected a request for special counsel to the Sewer Commission to utilize special counsel, and that your direction was to utilize town counsel. The Sewer Commission went out and retained counsel anyway, and I have a bill from counsel. I've asked the Sewer Commission not to go forward anymore, and I've received assurances that they won't. And I suggested to them that I would request that you pay the outstanding counsel bill and that we move on.
Move to authorize the Sewer Commission to utilize special counsel up to the amount of $1,890.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Your next vote is to approve a request from the Downtown Association to use sidewalks and tunnel, to use the sidewalks and tunnel cap on Sunday, October 19th, from 12 to 4 p.m. for the Hingham Arts Walk.
Move to approve the request of the Hingham Downtown Association to use the sidewalks and tunnel cap on Sunday, October 19th, 2014, from 12 p.m. to 4 p.m. for the Hingham Arts Walk.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Do you want me to take up the next vote, Mr. Chairman? You had requested me to put a vote forward to require town vehicles used by the Assistant Project Engineer, the transfer station, and the recycling supervisor, and the maintenance and equipment supervisor to be left at the DPW facility at the end of the workday and not to be taken to residents, as is their practice today.
Okay. Any questions?
I believe that this is a topic that should be vetted out in the budgetary process. I don't think that we should be taking this kind of vote. I've spoken to at least one member of the Highway Department who does use this vehicle. I've known him for 37 years. His credibility with me is unquestioned. I'm aware of the evolving work that the highway does out of the ordinary business hours. I know that there are a lot of vehicles that the town has that individuals drive. I think that this is something that should be more appropriately vetted during the budgetary process. The Advisory Committee can look at this, if this is a concern that any of us share. I think that's the proper place. I think doing this kind of makes it look like a witch hunt. I don't want to be part of that.
Amen.
Should I make a motion?
Yeah.
Motion to require the town vehicles used by the Assistant Projects Engineer, the Transfer Station, and the Recycling Supervisor, and the Maintenance and Equipment Supervisor be left at the DPW facility at the end of the workday and not taken to residences.
Do I hear a second?
I'm not seconding that.
Second. Any further discussion? We'll take a couple comments. Harry?
Harry Sylvester, Assistant Project Engineer. I've got a truck for over 30 years. Five department heads, 28 selectmen have viewed it as an integral part of my job performance. I work over 80 times a year outside normal work hours. Many times, I go come in late at night, I work all night. If I had to come in, get in calls at 11:30 at night, come in and get a truck, then go to, go out to the job site, it would take away one thing, sleep time. If I come home at 4 o'clock, now I have to drive back to the barn, park my truck, get my own car, drive back home. I'm home at 5 o'clock, go to work an hour and a half later. I've been staying up all night, several nights doing road construction jobs. Road construction is headed to off-normal work hours throughout the South Shore. Last Friday, the paving projects and- Last Friday, the paving projects and road projects in Brantry, the mayor called the hall to him because of the disruption that caused the town of Brantry. We've been doing night projects for the last four years. We've done over 12 miles of road at night. I've been out there on every single night. I think I perform my job at a high level. This truck has been viewed not only by the department head, but as my fellow workers, as a part of my benefit package. We pay taxes on that truck. I drive that truck from the building to my house, back to the building again. I think Mr. Gann can testify to that. About a half hour after I was out of work, I was at Hanford Market, I saw him walking in there. There was no town Hingham truck stopped running to get a gallon of milk. I was in my own personal car. I respect that car. I served the town. I served the board of selectmen at a high level, and I never abuse the privilege. I think it would just put a severe detriment to my job performance by not having a truck so I could leave my house and meet road crews at an assigned location in town. I would appreciate that you'd reconsider that question we have on the board to vote. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll take one other comment. Mr. Hershey. Actually, I'll take Karen, too.
I want to commend you on that vote tonight. Nobody knows better than John Hershey. I've seen this for too many years. This is a waste of taxpayers' money. I'm telling you right point-blank, these vehicles do not come back to Hingham and benefit the taxpayers. They don't plow snow, okay, and benefit the taxpayers, okay? And we shouldn't be allowing this. This is too much money for us. It's about time. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. I'm sure the taxpayers do that pay this bill every eight years of bringing new vehicles so they can go back at home, bust the gas. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Karen, do you want to say something?
Karen Johnson, 16 Berkeley Circle. I guess I had more of a process question sort of to Paul's point. In the six years or so that I was privileged to consider budgets, including the DPW budget, we did look at trucks and other resources provided to department heads. And then, you know, we gave the department heads the resources they needed, or the resources we had to be able to give them to manage their departments, kind of within their purview. And just, it's curious to me, I guess, as the executive branch of government, you know, it would strike me that you might make policies around vehicle use, but it's kind of curious to pick out particular vehicles and have the executive branch of government voting on those.
Thank you. Any further...
I'd like to comment. I would just ask that you put this on hold. Because, you know, to me, if you vote to take these away, you vote to take these away, I think you're going to be perceived as picking on a discreet group of employees. And, you know, I'm not trying to puff Harry Sylvester up, but I've known this guy a long time, and he knows the roadways of this town in ways that we never could, and we never will. And, you know, when there's a bad storm out there, the police and fire are out there, but so is the highway. So is Harry Sylvester. I've seen it. I've worked with him. And those trucks, yeah, they cost a few bucks, and, you know, I've seen other town employees with town vehicles coming in from where they live. I don't think that this is something that's being abused. I don't quite understand the reasoning that the two of you would want to do this. I don't hear an explanation. Why? Why are you doing this?
Every department has looked at their usage of vehicles that go home, go home. Mike Perino has done a job since he's taken over being chief as evaluating every car within his department. The people that take the cars home at night are normally on call, and I agree. I love Harry. He does a great job. Harry's in engineering. When he was in highway, he was the highway supervisor on call. These three trucks are not on call. And I've been on, I was, I first went on Capitol in 2002. So I think it's time.
But there are other vehicles that are taken home that aren't on call either.
Every department, every department has, every department has looked at their... So enough.
Mrs. President, Chairman, I just want to let you know that you asked me to ask the two department heads for these three vehicles, and I know one of them's here. I provided the board with letters that I thought gave very clear rationale for why these vehicles were important, including the fact that all of these vehicles are with people who are on call. They take these vehicles home, not as a request to them, but as a request to us. They're on call 24 hours a day. And Harry, while it's great that you don't take that vehicle home and into the supermarket for a quart of milk or whatever, you actually are entitled to do that because here's the deal. If I call you, or Randy, actually, because I'd never call you, wherever you are, you got to be here. And that's the rule of your employment. And that's why we give you that vehicle, not because we want to give you some perk. Now, you get taxed for it because the IRS requires us to do that, but we give it to these three individuals because they respond to our public safety needs as the department heads see fit. If the board wants to change that policy, as I've said to the board, it is without a doubt going to reduce the response time for the DPW when the public calls. And that's just no other way around that.
Okay. I said I wouldn't take any more. Leslie, I'll take one more.
Well, thank you. I don't normally speak in public. Leslie Keough, 10 Rockwood Road. I do work part-time for the DPW, so I have to make that clear right away. But I knew Harry prior to that when I was on the traffic committee. I don't see why Harry, if he has to respond during the night, should have to come in his own car when fire trucks and police cars are out. He's in an unidentifiable vehicle, and I think it should be made very clear who he works for and why he's out on the road, particularly if it's a snowstorm or the visibility is poor. I don't see any reason why he should have to go out in his personal vehicle unidentified in the middle of the night.
As I said, you know, the normal work year is around 270 days. I am out 80 times outside my normal work hours. And as a, just to let you know, as a result of this discussion tonight, the other supervisors and myself are entertaining going unionize, something that we would never want to do. But we're meeting with our union representatives next Thursday afternoon, and depending on how this vote turns out tonight, it will probably depend on where we go with that unionization.
I hope that's not a threat to the three of us.
It's not a threat. It's just that, you know, it just seems like we are being singled out of all the vehicles in town. There's only three of them, three of us, that are coming before the board for an investigation. I don't think that's fair.
Okay.
Can I just respond to that as well? I think that if there's a move afoot to unionize within a particular department, it's a clear signal that there's a feeling, that the employees feel vulnerable. And we just got through listening to a 43-year man that serves this town well, talking about the importance of mutual respect. And the rationale for us to be able to negotiate effectively with people is that each of us respect each other and this trust. But if this, if these kind of benefits or use of vehicles or whatever you want to call it are taken away like this, you know, individually singled out, I think that we're running into a problem. We're going to invite further union activity, both, you know, in the highway, and perhaps that can seep into other areas of town government. We don't, why? We don't want to do that.
Just quick thought on that, Paul. I don't have any problem with union activity. If the group wants to unionize anybody in this town, I'd be happy to see it. So, I mean, I don't want you to think that's a fear of everybody in this board.
No, but I mean, you know, they've been able to negotiate very well for many years, and it's, it's been proven. You've heard it tonight earlier by Nelson Ross. He's spanned probably 15 or 20 boards of selectmen. We're just one more. And I think what he was saying sends a message to us and to future boards just how important that dynamic is, that negotiating dynamic is. You know, we're, we've got a fire guy somewhere in the audience here. We've got the chief for sure, but where's McIntyre?
He had to leave.
All right. Well, you know, he'll watch this. I mean, I guarantee you that every town employee right now is watching us.
I'm sure they are. I hope they are.
But what's the message that we're going to send them with this vote?
What the message is that we want the highest and best use of the capital assets of the town?
It's, there's been a collective decision that that's been made by the advisory...
Explain to us, I'm sorry. Two things, just to follow up. I'm sorry, your name?
Karen Johnson.
Explain to us what prompted the inquiry, and then please explain the cost benefit to what you're trying to propose.
What prompted the inquiry? This has been looked at year after year, and each of the department heads have kind of skinny down the number of vehicles that are taken home. These vehicles, no, just sit down for a second.
As you go through them...
You can sit down.
If you could just itemize for us so we can understand that.
I don't have the whole list, but the best, the best examples I can give you is Chief Perino changed the way vehicles in his department. No one that's on call is being asked to not take a vehicle home. Those are all covered.
But didn't Mr. Sylvester just explain?
True.
Didn't Mr. Sylvester just explain the use?
Understood.
Okay. So why is that not clear in this board?
It's very clear to us. All right. I think we've had enough. All right.
Thank you.
Well, John, please.
It sounds like Mr. Hershey's...
Wrong.
He is not, he's not...
A worse person to be your spokesman.
Can you sit down? I don't think, I don't think you need to cast aspersions on Mr. Hershey.
Nobody's casting aspersions, but come on.
Understood.
He hasn't been a friend of the highway.
John is a taxpayer. He's also a human being. Okay, I'm done. All in, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. So be it. We have some more appointments to make if, do you want to continue? I don't think...
I'm just looking. Am I making...
Yeah, you want to join?
Oh, sure. Move to appoint Suzanne Hardin to the Beautification Commission for a three-year term ending June 30, 2017.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Move to appoint Carolyn Aliski to the Beautification Commission for a three-year term ending June 30, 2017.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to appoint Deborah Hayes to the Beautification Commission for a three-year term ending June 30, 2017.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Town, did we get through all the votes? Yep. Town administrator and selectman reports. Ted, you going to do the Aquarian thing, or do you want me to?
I thought you were. You indicated you wanted to, so...
You want to start with town administrator reports?
You know, I've reported to each of you specifically the variety of activities that have been going on. This week will begin the, next week, well, I'm sorry, will begin the budget process, and departments will, hopefully by the end of next week, begin to start receiving budget packages. We'll be due back to my office November 1st, and I will be providing you with a budget by the Thanksgiving holiday, as I traditionally do. That's all I have to report right now.
Okay. Paul and Paul, and then I've got a few things.
I have something. I'm hoping...
Can you talk about the meeting, the South Hingham Study Committee meeting?
Sure. Yeah, I'll do that first. Thank you for coming. Last...
No, it was Tuesday. Because that's why we're meeting on Thursday.
And thank you for doing that. The South Hingham Working Group, Judith Sneath is the chair, invited the South Shore Chamber of Commerce stakeholders, which included representatives from A.W. Perry and the Bristol property. And we were presented with the vision of growth from a business perspective, a marketing perspective up in South Hingham in the area of the industrial park and the Bristol property and Derby Shops. And we're a work in progress, literally, but we have approximately 250 acres of undeveloped land in South Hingham that the Bristol family owns and is in the process of developing. All of you have seen it with respect to the car dealership, the Chambers car dealership that's going in. And we were, we were not treated, but we were given a sense of what the landowner is considering with respect to that site. That would involve a zoning change, a mixed use, similar to what goes on in the shipyard. Craig Lane from HDIC put together a report which indicated the amount of vacancies available in the industrial park, or the South Shore Park as it's now called. So we've got a good sense of kind of the business growth potential there. We talked about the importance of regionalization in terms of initiatives, the likelihood of the Southeast Expressway expanding from two lanes in each direction to three. So we're continuing to work forward. We talked at some length about workforce housing, which is not affordable housing, but it's a, it's an interesting concept. I'm still trying to...
Figure out what it is?
Yeah.
So am I. Was it John Foreman?
Peter Foreman.
Peter Foreman.
Yeah.
Talked at great length, and I came away kind of going, what did he say?
Yeah. Well, it's kind of a new term, and I haven't really seen it until recently, so... I do have something. Is it possible to put this on the monitor, Ted?
Oh, sure. Ooh. Ooh. A one for Ted?
Yes, one for Ted.
Oh, cool.
Small story. I'll keep it short because I know we've got other business, but a few months ago, I sent Keith German a town flag. It's the flag that the Historical Society makes available to the residents. And he's in Djibouti. For those of you that may not know where Djibouti is, that's in Africa on the horn. And, you know, I got the distinct sense from his reaction to it and his appreciation of it, because I included with it a certificate signed by the Historical Commission with the able assistants of Chair Robert Curley, Andrea Young. And I thought to myself, you know, we've got other, at this point, it's men serving far away from here, Hingham residents. Wouldn't it be nice to send a flag from us, from the town, that they could have in their quarters, their, you know, their hooch, whatever you want to call it? So I asked Andrea to get some prices on what it would cost to make some flags up. And that, you can't really see it, but it's the, it's the town flag, town seal, and on top it says, saluting your service and commitment to our country with grateful appreciation, the townspeople of Hingham. And the cost to do that is about, it's a little under $4,000. I wrote to Keith. He thought it was a great idea. His only suggestion was to also include a flag to the families of these soldiers, sailors, marines, airmen, and coast guardmen who are here in Hingham. So it's my thought, and Ted is going to assist me, opening up a gift account, we'll publicize this a little bit. I'm going to seed it with my own money, but I'm hoping that the townspeople will step up. We've got about 40 active-duty service members now. Send it, send this flag with some kind of certificate, either signed by us, the Historic Commission. This was a group effort, I have to say, and many thanks to Andrea Young and Jamie Litchfield, the Veteran Services Officer filling in for Keith while he's serving our country overseas. I just think that this is a good thing to do. It gives continuity to the historical tradition of service that we've had as a town to our country. And it remembers that the men that are serving our country now in a very dangerous, uncertain time where the future is far from clear... uncertain time where the future is far from clear as to whether we'll be, you know, at peace or war. So I hope that the board will join in this effort, and we can get this going in short order. We just need about 4,000 bucks.
Very nice. This is a great idea. We'll toss some money in there, too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul, for doing that.
In fact, when you get the account, why don't you bring it back here to talk about?
Okay, will do.
So people know where to send the money. Or do we just make the checks out to Paul Healy?
No, I think it's going to be down. I think it's going to be. You're cute. Downstairs in the, what would that be, the treasures?
The Treasuries Office. The checks will be out of the Town of Hingham gift account, and we'll give you the number.
Yeah, that'd be good. We'll bring it back.
So if any of you can do that, that would be really appreciated.
That'd be super. Nice, and thank you for talking about South Hingham meeting. That was extremely enlightening. Do you want to go in then? Yay.
Thank you.
Just quick, someone may be able to plug in the date, but I thought I was talking to the Veterans Council that the upcoming honoring of Seaman Ross is coming up, I believe.
October 12th. I just put it on my calendar, his annual birthday.
And, you know, I would welcome and recommend, whether you're a veteran or not, to maybe go.
And it's held at the Ford Hill Cemetery at his graveside, and we always have the police and fire there, and it's really, it's very good, and the veterans come, and it's--
The Masons are there.
The Masons, sorry. Don't want to forget them, because Herman Foss was a Mason, so it was really good.
The only other thing is, while you two were at the South Hingham meeting, I was over and handover, watching and speaking to folks, because we're going to have an upcoming informational community forum on attempts to prevent drug abuse, and we have sponsors. It's probably made the paper this week as to who the sponsors are, police, fire, health, SAD, Friends of SAD, I don't want to leave anybody out, but I'm sure All-Town PTO. But I will just tell you this, though, when I went to that meeting, it wasn't a huge crowd, and will be the benefit of having TV, but the stories are compelling. There are people like us who have family members, elected officials who were there who had family members. It is an epidemic in the town, in the state of Massachusetts, and one of the reasons why we're having this forum is to try to bring everybody together to try to fight it, because we need all the resources, not only to prevent it, including law enforcement, but also resources to help people, because one of the things, one of the most troubling, and there's a lot of troubling statistics, is people that are injured and have surgeries, kids who were injured in sports, 23% of anybody who takes an opiate, and usually those are the medications prescribed, become addicted to that medication. And when they can't afford those pills anymore, and these are people that have probably worked a lot of their lives, working people, they turn to heroin, and that is a death wish for most people. And it is something we can work on, and Public Health is hopefully going to work with us on a regional basis on the South Shore, because every town has it, some are worse than others, and we need to step up, and hopefully if you can make it on the 22nd, it'll be some good information.
And spread the word to everybody, to ask them to come. It will be well worth people's time. The opiate problem is not only confined to the poorer towns by any stretch of the imagination. We've got a great police force here. The activity in the schools to keep kids away from the opiates in Hingham is especially good, but it's still here, and the more you know about it, the better off we're going to be. So please come and spread the word to come on the 22nd. That's it? Okay, I got a few things, starting with, let me start with the easy stuff first, the good stuff. Friday night, that's tomorrow, right? Roam the Tomes at the Public Library. That's their annual fundraiser. Tickets are still available. You can get them online. You can go over to the library to get them. So it's always a good time, so please support the Public Library. Also, Sunday is the Hingham Historical Society Historic House Tour, and you can get tickets right at one of the houses, start at Old Ordinary or Old Derby, and that's always a good take. Hopefully Mother Nature's going to cooperate. I want to thank, two things have occurred since we've been together, and all three of us were together, at the POW MIA Chair Ceremony, and we want to thank John Asher and all the Veterans Council and all the groups that played a role in that, especially Kevin McCarthy and his bagpipes. So he was there and piped the chairs. They uncovered the chairs. Really, really something, and we had rolling thunder come through, quietly, of course, since we have the noise bylaw, but it was a really good take. And always remember, we still have an awful lot of men and women who haven't come home. Also, the Fields ribbon cutting. That was great fun. Homecoming didn't turn out so well, but there's always next year. But it was a great time. All three of us were there, and it was, we were very much included by the school committee and everything, which is also, we're very thankful for that. Plymouth County update, and then I'm going to talk about Aquarian. Good news coming out of Plymouth County. I know everybody, really good news. Their budget's in good shape this year. They have moved out of the building in Plymouth into their own building, also in Plymouth, but near the Registry of Deeds, and two pieces of legislation, really important pieces, have gone through. So they're kind of on the mend. They've got a way to go, but the three new commissioners are fantastic. The first being the courthouse rent, which was completely problematic. Plymouth County owns the courthouses, leases them out to the state, and if the state were your tenant, you would have bounced them, because they weren't very good at paying their bills. They've now got a piece of legislation through. They're paying market rate for the rents, and if they don't pay them within 15 days, they add another 5% on there. So the money is finally coming in so that the courthouses can be fixed. And the good news for Hingham, and Dan Pallotta, one of the three county commissioners, gets a lot of credit for this, is a brand-new HVAC system in the Hingham courthouse. I didn't realize that it was so, is uncomfortable the word I want, in the summer and the winter? Now, you do a little bit of business there.
Oftentimes, it's always uncomfortable in a courthouse.
This is true. Well said.
You're not kidding.
But apparently, the HVAC system was piping, and for about the past, Ted, do you know more about this? Help me out with this. For the past year, year and a half, they actually had space heaters and fans, because they couldn't fix it? Oh, I don't know. I'm sure I'm wrong. Well, it's done now. Dan Pallotta got DCAM to completely fund the replacement of the HVAC system, which is a first. Again, they have a long way to go, but I'm amazed at what they've done in the first year trying to fix the problems. And DCAM is the Division of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance, so they completely funded the new HVAC system. The other piece of legislation that's actually more important, because it takes $6.8 million worth of liabilities off the books of Plymouth County. When the Sheriff's Department moved to the state, they shared. They took the bodies and they left the liabilities with Plymouth County. And what this piece of legislation did, basically shifted the liabilities to where the bodies went. So that takes quite the load off Plymouth County. There's four other pieces of legislation that will be filed again this coming season, so. And also, the 2010 fiscal year audit has been approved. It'll be up on the website soon, and the reason that has taken so long, that was the year the Sheriff's Department was transferred, so there was paperwork that was needed for the audit all over the place. So that's good news. Aquarian has just put a ban on, again, rather quickly. The tanks are fine. We're not in any, and honestly, Mark deserves all the credit in the world for checking them virtually every day, and Aquarian knows he's watching, so we're in good shape. But let me read this. Abnormally dry conditions and continued high water demand have resulted in lower reservoir and groundwater levels, resulting in Aquarian Water Company prohibiting the use of sprinklers in irrigation systems. Handheld watering is permitted at this time. Recently, the U.S. Drought Monitor classified much of southeastern Massachusetts as being in a moderate drought, and that's why they've now put the ban on again. And also, people were not adhering to the odd and even days. And part of that was the long, hot summer. People were trying to restore their lawns, thought it was fine to do so, and it really wasn't. Current drought conditions reinforce the importance of all Hingham Hull and Cohasset residents and businesses to conserve water, said Renate Goldstein, Aquarian Community Relations Manager. According to the Hingham Journal, almanac, rainfall in Hingham amounted to just 2.6 inches from July 5th through September 15th, which is 20% of the normal 9.64 inches. And I won't, oh, well, I will read, because this talks about, if you don't stop, they're going to start fining people. Under Aquarian's rules and regulations approved by the Mass DPU, failure to comply with mandatory restrictions will result in a written warning. Subsequent violations can result in the discontinuance of water service, with termination and restoration fees ranging from $49 to $294, depending on the day of week, time of day, and holidays. This is up on the website. It's going to be in the Hingham Journal. It's out on email. So if you know people that are still using their irrigation systems, if you would spread the word, please don't. This is kind of the end of the season, anyway. So that's what, coming out from Aquarian. And I think that's all I've got.
Can we take a short break before we do the next?
Yes. Well, my question is, are we doing one public and one? Can you go find out?
Yeah, the request was made to do this in public, to have the hearing in public.
Okay. I talked to Kevin late in the day. Have you talked to him since?
I heard at 6:30 that they had wanted him in public.
Yeah, let's take a little, we'll take a five-minute break and be back. Yeah, let's take a little, we'll take a five-minute break and be back. Well, welcome back. We are going to have a personnel hearing at the request of Mr. Fernandez. This is to be done in public. So if, Roger, if you'd like to come up with your lawyer and join us. And let me just give, right there, or two. And then if you'd like to introduce yourselves.
Thank you. My name is Matthew Dwyer. I'm appearing here today on behalf of Mr. Fernandez.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman.
I'm Roger Fernandez.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Just as a preliminary matter, I made a request for all documents which would support any complaint being made against Mr. Fernandez on September 25th, 2014. I was presented with a yellow folder tonight.
As I was.
And I just want to make sure.
All three of us were.
I know exactly what documents you're relying on to go forward.
Well, this, let me make a few statements. I'm assuming that, and I bet you put the folders together.
I did.
Everything's in there that we need. An issue was brought to the Board of Selectmen, and tonight, this is fact-finding only. That's why we put it on the agenda. We are not going to take any public comment tonight, just collect the facts, and then we will have another opportunity to get back together. And the issue that was brought to the Board of Selectmen was an issue of credentials and education on the resume and on the application form. And my understanding is all of that is in our folders.
Well, may I ask, who brought that to the Board of Selectmen's attention?
It was a citizen.
Who?
I don't, we're not going to get into main.
Why not? I think the man has a right to know who brought this to somebody's attention.
We've got, we've got the issues here, and we've got the information. So what I'd like to start with would...
I object to going forward without knowing that. I think as a foundational element, we need to know who the accuser is.
And for the record, I gave a letter to the Board of Selectmen. All three Selectmen on it, it's not in the package.
Yes.
I have mine.
And so do I.
All right. I'm sorry, this was, I'm betting, Sharon, you didn't have this. I apologize. The three Selectmen got it directly.
September 15th.
I have the same one.
Okay. We all do.
Paul, can you give that to Betty so that she can put it in the record?
Can you put this in the record as well?
So, the issue, and I'd like to go ahead and ask that, does Mr. Fernandez or his lawyer want to make a statement before we just start the inquiry?
Yes. Madam Chairman, again, my name is Matthew Dwyer, and I do wish to make a statement on behalf of Mr. Fernandez. First of all, I would join with your colleague in objecting to going forward on this matter because the matter that brings us here tonight, from my understanding, is a letter dated September 24th in which the assertion is made that the purpose of tonight's meeting is to consider discipline or dismissal or to hear complaints or charges brought against Mr. Fernandez. And it is contemplated, according to the letter, that the issue to be discussed is the credentials listed on Mr. Fernandez's resume and related issues, it says. And I object to going forward for several reasons. One, I would like to be furnished on behalf of Mr. Fernandez with a very specific allegation so that I may not be required to rope in the fog. I wish to be able to respond to a discreet, specific allegation, if there is one, and I also wish to be told who it is is making that allegation. I think that is a fundamental issue of fairness to my client, and if, after being furnished with that allegation and being furnished with disclosure of who is accusing Mr. Fernandez of what, we will then do our best to prepare a defense, and we will come before your body if your body deems it necessary to have a hearing on that, and we'll do our best to meet that issue head-on. But I do not wish to rope in the fog by trying to respond to allegations that I have not been furnished with and documents which I'm told for the first time tonight, you have that I don't. So as a matter of fundamental fairness, I would think the most appropriate way to proceed is for somebody to decide whether there is an allegation of some specificity to be furnished to us that we will then be able to address in a meaningful way.
The question is, the degrees, and...
I don't know what that means, Madam Chairman. The question is the degrees. I do not know what that means.
On Roger's resume, and let me, and I'm looking at the employment application. It is Bristol Community College and Northeastern University, Civil Engineering, and I am looking for his resume.
I object. There's nothing with respect to a complaint being made.
And there's no disclosure.
Simply to cite a resume, that gives us no sense of what the allegation against Mr. Fernandez is and by whom.
And the...
With all due respect.
Well, with all due respect, the people do not want to come forward who are questioning his education credentials.
We cannot have anonymous accusations. That is outrageous.
Well, it's pretty easy...
That is a smear of the first order.
No, but it's pretty easy. If Roger has the degrees, then this thing completely goes away. And it doesn't matter who's asking.
I must say, on behalf of Mr. Fernandez, I thought we had come to a point in this society where we didn't respond to anonymous accusations. And I'm not going to dignify anonymous accusations with a response. I think anybody who wants to make an accusation is free to do so, but they ought to have the courage of their convictions to come forward and identify themselves and then make that accusation, and then we'll respond to it. But I'm not going to try to rope in the fog.
That's an interesting term. Gentlemen?
Just a quick thought. Counsel, I respect your objection. I respect your opinion, but I'll tell you this, that all I want to do is get to the truth. This is a fact-finding hearing, and you'll have another opportunity. If your client wants to speak about it, fine. I have the utmost respect for him, and I'm looking for answers. I'm hoping I find them. But we have a right to know whether our town engineer has a civil engineering degree, as it says in his resume. We're not going to all hide in a clause and pretend we don't have the paperwork here. We do. We're trying to do our due diligence and find out. We're not trying to condemn him. We're not trying to discharge him. We're just trying to get the facts, and that's what we're going to do tonight. Your objection is noted, obviously, and, you know, I'm hoping we get some answers.
May I respond?
Sure.
I believe that Selectmen Lawtor tasked the town administrator with investigating the circumstances with respect to Mr. Fernandez's hire. It's my understanding that he inquired of the town administrator who was working for the town of Hingham at the time relative to the circumstances of his hire. It's my understanding that he surveyed the Selectmen then sitting on the Board of Selectmen at the time that Mr. Fernandez was hired. It's my understanding that he conferred with Labor Counsel, who's present in the room here tonight, and based on all of that, there was a finding that there was no wrongdoing. And I am at a loss to understand why this is continuing to go forward based on that, that the gentleman was hired with full knowledge of his credentials at the time he was hired by the then Board of Selectmen and by the town administrator who was working for the town at the time. I don't see why this should go forward at all, with all due respect to what you've just said.
Can I give you what I found out, Paul?
Sure.
As I talked to our Labor Counsel, and he was told, he told me he was specifically asked one question, whether there was resume fraud, okay? Right? And that's a...
What was his answer?
You know the answer. He put written finding.
No, but what did he tell you?
Paul, if it's my turn to talk, you can respond after, okay? Out of respect, I like to finish.
I will. Fine. I'll wait.
This is an important issue, and I just want to make sure we get it all out. That's all I want. Bottom line is, when I talked to Mr. Feely, I said to him, and I pointed out, it doesn't look like he has an engineering degree. It's required for the job. And I went through all the things with him. And I said to him, there are probably 10 questions that should have been asked by town council, to town council, as to what was going on. It's not, I don't even know what the definition of resume fraud is. I mean, I certainly didn't create it, but I know that something isn't quite right. And I want to get, my issue is this, I'll tell you this. Fairness and liability. If we don't have a town engineer who told us in his writings, a BS from Northeastern, if he's not an engineer, and if he's designing things as an engineer, and if he's acting as an engineer, there's a liability issue for the town. I want to protect the town. That's what my job is, okay? That's, I'm not out to get Roger Fernandez. I like the man. I hope that there's an explanation for this. I hope there's a solution for this. But out of fairness, when you apply for jobs, and people do it every day, and they come up and they say, here's the requirements, you have to have a degree, and you're turned away because you don't have it, and it's not right. And people, people are told they're not qualified every day. I hear it from people. That one wasn't qualified. He's not qualified. Well, it seems pretty simple to me that the people, they put a requirement in for a BS, civil engineering.
Okay. Continue.
Just about done.
Thank you.
Okay. And experience. And experience, I don't, I don't think that's the issue. So all I want to do is get answers. I'm not trying to condemn anybody, but to pretend that this investigation, you call it, was a thorough investigation, it begs the question, because all the questions weren't asked and they weren't answered. And so, that's all I'm asking.
The presumption was, as town engineer, because I'm the one that went ahead and changed his title to town engineer, because I felt so strongly, but I received his resume from Ted, and I verified he had an engineering degree.
Just a point of correction, you did not receive the resume from me.
Yeah, I got it from David after telling you what I was thinking of doing, that the presumption was that he had the civil engineering degree. Because I even asked Ted, could we pay for Roger's PE? Because as he's doing plans, it costs us money to bring somebody in to put a stamp on.
May I speak to that? I'm unaware of any complaint with respect to the performance of Roger Fernandez.
But we're not here to discuss the performance.
No, but you're speaking to his qualifications and the exposure that the town has to liability, correct?
Yes.
It's one of my concerns, yeah.
Right. So, in part, you're speaking to his ability to perform satisfactorily...
No, I'm not, actually.
So that he's not exposing the town to liability.
I'm not, actually.
We're looking at the qualifications. We've not...
I have no problem with the work that he's done on different, different projects. I really don't, and I'll say that 100 times.
Yeah.
But if we have a town engineer who's not an engineer, as was required, and that was in this, in the description and in the resume, you know, we can't just turn a blind eye toward it. I mean, I think people in town need to know whether it's in public or private. I was going to ask the same questions. All I'm looking for is answers. If there's an explanation for it, you know, I'll consider it, and I'll consider that he's a very good employee. You know, this is not an easy thing. I've been thinking about this for weeks.
Terrible.
And it doesn't make me feel good to sit here, but what am I supposed to do when I'm showing documents that don't add up? That he doesn't have the degree, it purports to show he does. And I assume he got the job, at least in part on that. I mean, I've heard different explanations, Paul, as to whether he was in class, whether he was doing this, whether he was taking courses at Northeastern, but the documents say, the documents say a BS, and the application says he spent four years, including, I assume, two years at Northeastern, if you do the math. I don't understand why it doesn't reflect...
I'm looking at the entirety of the circumstances as I understand them.
Sure.
And I'm satisfied with the explanation.
I didn't hear an explanation.
I haven't heard one either, and that's the fact-finding tonight.
That's what I'm trying to find out.
We're not going to make any decisions tonight at all. So, can you corroborate that you in fact have an associate in civil engineering from Bristol and were, was in process, and how far along, at Northeastern University for a degree in civil engineering?
Before my client answers that, and he will answer that, I want to correct the record here. It has been repeatedly stated tonight that according to documents that you folks have that I may not have, that a degree, a bachelor's degree in civil engineering was a requirement for the job. Now, if that's true, I'm not aware of any document that makes that clear.
Okay. And you should get all the documents. I didn't know you didn't get them by...
No, I do not, I do, I do not have whatever it is that you're alluding to. The document that I have looked at makes it rather clear to me that when Mr. Fernandez was originally hired, the degree was a, stated as a preference but not a requirement for the position, and that in fact...
That's not true.
It was... Did you say it's untrue?
Right.
Well, I'm looking at a document, ma'am. Now, you said that something I just said is untrue, so now you leave me no choice but to say to you that the document I'm looking at states, "Education and experience, Bachelor of Science degree in civil engineering, 10 years of full-time planning and civil engineering design, construction, and supervisory experience on a variety of engineering projects, especially those involving public works, construction," and then it says, "or an equivalent combination of education and experience." But I don't want to quibble over this. I think you have a letter that's dated September 15th from your town manager who indicates that it was fully disclosed by Mr. Fernandez when he interviewed for the job that his resume was, to the extent it states, a bachelor's degree was in error. He made that disclosure fully 10 years ago, and he made it clear he did not have a bachelor's, that he had been enrolled in a degree program for, in engineering, for a bachelor's degree, but he did not have the degree, and he made that clear to Mr. Costello, who interviewed him for the position. That was disclosed 10 years ago. Mr. Costello was then interviewed recently by your current town manager. Mr. Costello, in his letter, in his conversation, confirmed that with Mr. Alexiades, and he was hired with full knowledge and understanding that he did not have the degree. And we thought this matter was put to rest 10 years ago, when he was hired. However, when it came up more recently, it's my understanding that Mr. Alexiades was advised and wrote a letter in which he confirmed that the prior town manager stated that there was full disclosure that he didn't have the degree. No one's ever asked him for the degree. He's never represented since then that he had a degree, and he's going to answer your questions, but I just want to make it clear. It's my understanding that on September 15th, the board was, this information was made known to the board. So I wonder why we're here tonight? If in fact, this is something that was fully disclosed 10 years ago, and if in fact, Mr. Alexiades spoke to Mr. Costello, who confirmed that it was disclosed 10 years ago, I'm just wondering why it's become an issue again tonight?
Yeah, I mean, I'll be honest with you. I've heard so many things, and that's one of the reasons why I wanted to come here tonight. I mean, I also understood that that may not be the case, and so I was hoping, as I spoke to Mr. Alexiades today, that if there was somebody who was actually there along with Mr. Fernandez that had that conversation, they could clear it up for us. You know, I mean, that's, that's one of the reasons why I'm here.
The only person that I know of, sir, that could clear that up would be Mr. Costello, who's not here. But I think there are other people here who hired Mr. Fernandez upon Mr. Costello's recommendation who could tell you, if we had to have a hearing, that they were fully cognizant of his qualifications and that he didn't have a bachelor's degree.
I would love to hear from him.
Let's hear from him.
Sure.
Well, let's, let's also do some dates. Okay, listen, why don't you come on up? The application was 5/11/2004.
Can we introduce the job vacancy that counsel just referred to into the record for purposes of identification?
Go ahead, give it the date, too.
And the application is, the line in the September 15th letter, which I assume you both have.
I have that letter, yes.
Okay. I talked with Roger and asked him if this was true, and he freely admitted that he did not have a degree, and then he was a degree candidate at that time, which would be 2004.
What? Well-
So-
That's your interpretation of that statement. He was a degree candidate. I don't believe he asserted to Mr. Cristello that he was a degree candidate in 2004, but only Mr. Cristello and Mr. Fernandez can speak to that issue.
All, what I'm reading from is the letter that our town administrator sent to the three of us.
Yes, but you're interpreting it, ma'am.
I'm reading it word for word. So, Ms. Tully, would you introduce yourself again?
Yes. Melissa Tully, 29 Back River, former member of the Board of Selectmen, 2002 to 2008. And I was present and had discussions with Charlie Cristello, the then-town administrator, about the hiring of Roger Fernandez. We hired him specifically to help oversee and the Green Bush construction. I remember distinctly Charlie coming in, presenting Roger's credentials, saying, "It's not exactly what we're looking for, but this is an outstanding candidate. We will take, you know, his experience as it is, because this is an outstanding candidate." And Roger was not only, he was so good at the job with Green Bush, that we were determined to find a way to make him a permanent town employee. So, I don't understand how this has gotten to this point. I know that Matt MacGyver, who served with me, and was there also for the hiring, has the same memory. He has sent in a letter, saying that he remembers that also, that Charlie had that discussion with him. And Phil Edmondson, who is the third member of the board, collaborates also, that we were all aware that Roger did not have a four-year engineering degree-
Thank you.
-at the time he was hired.
Madam Chairman-
Can I just ask a question?
Of course. So, Melissa, that's, I guess what I was going to ask you, is, is the information that was conveyed to you, that was specific about the not having a degree, is that what you're saying?
I think, yes. That's my memory is, that he did not have a four-year degree, but his experience was such, in the associate degree, that we should hire him. It was Charlie's recommendation that we should hire him. And Charlie was fully aware of what his educational credentials were, as was the rest of the Board of Selectmen, at that time.
Thank you.
Mr. Gannon, I would like to make a part of the record, the letter that this lady has just referred to from Mr. MacGyver. Apparently, he's traveling in California, couldn't be with us-
I don't think we've seen that one yet. That's great.
It was handed to me this evening, and I'm happy to make copies of it available to you. I have extras here.
Great.
I'd like that to be made a part of the record.
These copies?
Can we hear-
Any other questions?
Well, I'd like to hear.
Okay.
I'd also like to hear the, sorry, can't do two things at once, the fact that, Roger, do you have an associate's in civil engineering, as your resume and the application says?
Yes, of course.
When you receive a degree, whether it's a bachelor's degree, or an associate's degree, it's a degree in science, with the specific, as you know, with the category-specific discipline. So I graduated from BCC at the time, with an associate's degree in science, credits all transferred to Northeastern University, with a major or focus in civil engineering.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, this should really read, instead of a A S C E, an A S E T. Engineering, Associate in Science Engineering Transfer.
To be candid, I'm not sure that that's-
I don't think I could give my own degrees at this point.
Yeah, I think that it's referred to as an associate's in science, with the focus in civil engineering.
Okay.
And I was accepted into the engineering program at Northeastern University, accepted, accepted into the program, under a civil engineering program at Northeastern.
Thank you. Would you like to say something, you or your lawyer?
No, I have nothing to add to what my client just said. I think he's tried to be candid and forthright with, with you, and you have his, apparently his employment application, and it says what it says. But the fact of the matter is here, I think it bears emphasis that the people who were involved in this process at the time, are not asserting that they were misled in any way, shape, or manner.
May I have a question? I didn't want to interrupt you.
Of course.
Thank you. And I'll direct it to you and Roger, whoever wants to hear. So, again, my, my concern was twofold, and one of it is liability. So, what I'm trying to understand is, is not having the degree, and again, I, I don't pretend to know a lot about engineering, but it's brought, it's brought to my attention that you may be designing roadways, and I would assume as an engineer. And my concern is, and maybe you can address it, is, is there any liability on the town for, if you don't have the degree? And I'm assuming, and/or counsel, is there somebody else reviewing it, who is, who is an engineer? And are we hiring that person to do that job? If you could explain.
Let me just say this to you. In the brief, brief time I've had to look at this, I've learned that there's nothing in state law that I'm aware of, and I have looked, that define what are the duties of a town engineer. And I don't know, I haven't had a chance to study your bylaw carefully enough to know whether or not there was a requirement, that there be a degree for the person, for the person who is occupying that position. Don't know that. I do know that Mr. Feely, your counsel, was asked a similar question, and it was his view, according to this letter that I've seen dated September 15th, that there wasn't such liability to the town. I express no opinion on that subject, because I don't know. I haven't researched it. But I do know that from the available information, I've not seen anything to suggest to me that there is such liability.
The September 15th letter is from Mr. Feely to?
No, this is a letter from Mr. Alexiades to, I believe you, Mr. Gannon, in which he says, "I then consulted Kevin Feely, our Labor Counsel. I asked Attorney Feely if based on my findings, there was any exposure to the town, and would there be any recourse to the town because of an inaccurate resume? Mr. Feely said there was no fraud intended, because Mr. Fernandez had identified the inaccuracy at the time of the interview. He also opined that there was no liability to the town, because Mr. Fernandez did not use the resume for any submissions on behalf of the town." So I don't know, when Mr. Feely, and he's here, he can obviously speak to his own views on this, but it seems to me, he suggested there was no exposure.
Can I just, one second, Ted, one second. Just let me, and I understand what you're saying, and I spoke to Mr. Feely, and I just, just want to be, everybody be clear, I'm not, not saying that's not accurate. As to the fraud in the resume, in terms of liability to the town, Mr. Feely expressed that opinion to me as well, okay? When I asked Mr. Feely about the liability of someone who is not an engineer, doing work in the town, designing work and so forth, which there are regulations, I can get them, and I'll get them to you, that require people to be, you know, certified, or have a degree to do certain work. And I, again, I'm just assuming, from what I understood, from what I've heard, and again, I'm here to listen as well, that he was doing work as an engineer, in terms of planning and designing and so forth. And Mr. Feely, you know, didn't address those issues. And I don't know if he, I'm not asking him to, you can ask him if you want to now, but it's a question. So, I don't disagree with your, you know, recitation of what he said, that it was about resume fraud. It wasn't about liability for him acting as an engineer, and that's what I don't know. And I, bottom of my question was, what's the role of the, of the engineer who's doing the other work that he can't do? Well, that's a, that's a fair question.
I think it'd be helpful if I clarified what I asked Mr. Feely, so that, because I think there's a misinterpretation there. I did not ask Mr. Feely if there was any liability to the town for the work that Mr. Fernandez performed, because I know the answer to that. We've been building roads in this town long before Roger was here, or anybody was here, and Harry has none of those degrees. So, and Harry was doing it beforehand. So I was clear that that wasn't-
He's got a lot of knowledge.
And I just didn't go to counsel to ask that question, because that's not what Ms. Lauter asked me to do. So I verified whether there was resume fraud, and I verified whether the board could take action against Mr. Fernandez's contract, and whether or not the town was liable for that resume, should we have submitted it in form of a grant application, or represented his credentials in some business transaction that we had. So I did not ask the liability question, as, as you say, I want to be clear, so I'm not talking in different ways here.
And that's fair enough. But I'm asking it because it's a question that probably should be asked.
It's a question that I didn't come here prepared to discuss-
Fair enough.
-because quite frankly, the focus of my participation tonight was to hope, hopefully ascertain what wrongdoing, if any, my client is accused of, so that we could then come to grips with that. I don't say your question's not a legitimate one, from the perspective of any town official who wants to know what the town's exposure may be. That isn't something I was prepared to-
And let me clarify, what I asked Ted to do was just verify the education credentials as shown on Roger's resume. Because my understanding is, much like Paul Gannon's, people that are drawing plans, is normally an engineer assigns it, and a stamp goes with it. Now, I could be wrong, but that's my understanding of all engineering projects I've ever been involved in. You do have a professional engineer, or someone verifying that the plans meet whatever code or state regs.
Well, if you're, the focus of your question is, what if any exposure does the town bear by reason of employing somebody who does not have an engineering degree, who is performing the type of work that Mr. Fernandez is performing? If he has information on that, I'm happy for him to share that with you.
It's not just that question, but I mean, if he wants to answer that question, it's fine.
I'd like to answer any question you might have.
Thank you.
But let me, let me be clear about that. I could stand before you with a PhD in engineering, a master's degree in engineering, a bachelor's degree in engineering, an associate's degree in engineering. The state has one requirement for, if you want to stamp a drawing. It's a PE, professional engineer stamp. And in no time, ever, have I ever said that I had the professional engineer stamp. It was never a requirement, as part of my initial application at the town. It was not, never in the job description. And so, you could have the PhD. It doesn't matter if you don't have the stamp. But the aspects of work that I manage, where a stamp would be required, those sources are seeked outside of town, so we outsource that information. But we regularly do work within the town, as Mr. Alexiades has stated, over the last hundred years, where this position did not exist, that included the type of work that I do now. And I think that I'm trying, what I'm trying to tell you is that, in the middle of sort of this, my employment, over the last ten years, you're asking for something that I did not, was not required of me, when I first was hired. You're changing the rules, in the middle of my ten-year hire, my tenure tenure, okay? I could look at you today, Irma, and say, you know, you work for me, your bachelor's degree isn't good enough anymore. You're required to have a PhD, and I don't think that's fair.
And Roger, let me stop you right there.
Sure.
Because no one's ever asked you if you had a PE. I did go to Ted and say-
Well, you're asking me about, not to interrupt you, I'm sorry, but you asked me, you asked me about exposure. I'm answering that specific question. Mr. Gannon asked the question about exposure. I gave you that answer. The exposure only lies within the professional engineer stamp.
Yep.
So, for 150 bucks, I can have anybody stamp anything you want. But what I'm, what I'm trying to tell you is that, when that kind of work comes into play, elements that are structural, elements that require, you know, structural members, or things that might impact public safety in terms of structural members, we, we do this all the time. I do, I do this regularly. We outsource that work. I'm not a structural engineer, and many folks that you know are not either. What I'm trying to tell you is, that's where the liability ends, is that requirement. That's the only statute that exists within the state, as far as liability goes. And if you required that, then the person you would hire would also like to require some sort of insurance that covers that individual, make sure that they don't become liable. But it was never a requirement, as part of the job description, when you hired me ten years ago.
Ms. Lauter, may I suggest that Mr. Cristello has entered the building?
Oh, great. Would you like to say anything, Charlie?
I would invite Mr. Cristello to illuminate us on his memory of this particular hire. Good evening, Charles.
Good evening, everyone.
Nice to see you.
The job description as written, as you have in front of you, is very typical. It gives you the flexibility of hiring somebody with a degree, or without having a degree. And in this case, we were aware that Roger didn't have a degree, and it didn't matter. We went on his qualifications. He came highly recommended. We were very happy to have him, and certainly for all the time that I worked with him, I was very happy that we made that hire. The degree absolutely didn't matter.
And did you inform the then-Board of Selectmen with respect to all of this, before they made the decision that they did to hire him?
I mean, I believe I heard testimony earlier on TV, that in fact, they were aware of it.
I just want to confirm through you. I just want to make sure for the record that you did that.
Or, or equivalent.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming in, sir.
Thanks, and happy-
Mr. Edmondson, would you step up?
Happy retirement.
Thank you.
Can we invite Mr. Edmondson? He'd be the remaining portion of this.
Hi, Phil Edmondson, 55 Cottage Street. I don't know if there's much more I can say, but I did serve in the Board of Selectmen from 2001 until 2007. And I have a similar memory to Melissa Tully, to Charlie Cristello, about the events surrounding this. And the only other thing I remember is that, I believe Roger first started working for us as a clerk of the works on the, on the railroad project, and-
Project inspector.
Well, in my mind, it was clerk of the works. It was to take care of the town, take care of the town's interests. And then later on, we determined that we really needed somebody like this for similar work ongoing, because the town just always had construction projects going on. And weren't we lucky to have somebody who had worked for the town? And we got a chance to try him out, and, and we got such great value for what he did for us, that we wanted him to work for us full-time. I think that's all else I can add to it.
I take it you were well satisfied with his performance, sir?
Yes, yes, of course, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Let me just say, Roger, I had gone to Ted and said, could the town pay for Roger to get his PE? So it wasn't a requirement. It was just a way for me to say, we can save money if we pay for Roger to get his PE.
Mrs. Lauter, I just want to say that I can assure you with 100% confidence, that the town has not spent any more money here, under my current job description, under my current credentials, whether I had a PE or not. I promise you that the value that I brought to this town, the hundreds of thousands of dollars I've saved this town, and let that, let that, let's speak to the people I've worked with, I think that they can attest to that, would not have been any more or any less if I had that credential or not.
Thank you.
So Roger, just to follow that up, so I think you answered it mostly, but, so we didn't have to hire an engineer to do a job that you normally would do, if you were the engineer?
Correct. And if I may, and it's counsel a little bit, I just want to be clear on a couple of things, because I've sat here quietly, and I respect your questions, I really do. And I, but, first is, the, the job application, and the duties under that application, and the credentials that were, that were put forth, on the point of my original hire, I meet unequivocally 100% those qualifications. No question about it. Secondly, I've had prior Boards of Selectmen, I've had the former town administrator come forward, these folks also asserted that I've been fully, I fully disclosed my credentials at that time. So the question about the, the nomenclature, if you will, on the resume, and I'm going to tell you what that meant. If you go online tonight, and if you look the proper way to fill out a resume, you are allowed to list the course study that you, that you were able to attain. In other words, I was accepted into a Bachelor of Science Engineering program in Northeastern. They don't accept everybody into a Bachelor of Science Engineering program in Northeastern. I think you can attest to that, Mrs. Lauter. So I was accepted into that program. I listed that. I was accepted into the Bachelor of Science Engineering program in Northeastern. That is a fact. And I did not list the graduation date, I did not list anything other than that. And that's allowed in any resume. Secondly, I attended classes at Northeastern, structural engineering, soil mechanics. The human resources director has a copy of my transcript. I did not provide a copy to anyone else, because it's my personal information, and I did not provide a copy to anyone else, because it's my personal information, and I entrust only the Human Resources person with that information. But he is here, and I'm sure he's not going to mislead you on my behalf. But in that, those classes that you would normally take under any science program that I've taken, that's not... These are classes that are not easy, by the way, but these classes that I have taken are there on that transcript. Secondly, I do have an associate's degree in civil engineering. I earned that. I earned that, and I was accepted into an engineering program, and that's what I listed on the resume, on my application. It clearly states, you said it yourself, an ACEC. That was what I have. It says degree. I wrote that specifically at that location. I did not write Bachelor of Science in that location. I wrote exactly the degree I had at that location. And furthermore, four years listed there? You can, again, ask the director, the Human Resources Director. I did go to school for four years. I did take longer to do. I took summer classes. You know, it's difficult for people to understand that, and maybe from my background, this might be difficult for you to understand. But for somebody from my background to do what I was able to, excuse me, to do what I was able to do and accomplish what I was able to accomplish, I am not embarrassed in the least. I am not. I've made my bones here for 10 years, and the reason why I'm having this in a public meeting and not in a private meeting, in a private session, as is my right to do so, is to do one thing, and that's to clear my name. Because my name's been dragged around, and I'm sorry, dragged through the mud with vicious letters sent out, mailed out to hundreds of residents, mailed out to every department in this town. Why? After 10 years of faithful service? What did I do to deserve this? I've never lied to anyone in my life. My credentials are exactly as I have shown. Now, you might have an interpretation difference, but I got accepted into an engineering program in Northeastern. I am proud of that. I do not ask, I do not apologize for that. I earned that. And now, because there's some sort of discrepancy, you consider it a discrepancy, Mrs. Lauter? There is no discrepancy. What I've listed there is accurate, 100%. I've never lied to you, Mr. Gannon. I will never lie to you, and I've never lied to Mr. Healy. But I got to tell you something. This is no way to treat your employees, and I'm sorry if I'm going off topic here. My counsel's probably going to give me one hell of an earful when I get out the door. But you guys know me well enough to know. I've been here 10 years. You look back at my resume 10 years later? Do me a favor. Look back at my job performance. Measure what I've saved this town. There is no exposure to this town, Mr. Gannon. There is no exposure at all. Your colleagues, the friends that you know in the engineering field, ask them who they call when they have a question about doing work. Ask them who they refer to. And if they don't say my name, "Sir, come back here and you tell me," and I will resign on the spot. But you know who I'm talking about. You know, you have friends that would do this for a living. I mean, at this point, I just don't know why I'm being put through this. I really don't. I don't think I've earned this, and I'm sorry if I went off topic, but that's how I see it.
Thank you very much. No, thank you, Roger, very much.
Thank you. Sorry.
Can I just ask one final question? Are you...